We're recording in progress.
Yeah. Here comes Rashina. Um, she did not see. So it is six o'clock. Let's start the meeting. On your to establish.
All right. I'll take the attendance. Um, Commissioner Van Brace.
Eric.
Uh, Commissioner Lou.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hector.
Hey.
Uh, Commissioner W.
Yeah.
Um, and Commissioner Wayne.
Yeah.
Okay, let the record show that, um, Commissioner Leland is absent and that Commissioner Tuchler is going to be late. And we have a comment.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, I guess we do have one comment, uh, for items not on the agenda, and that is by Gary Headman announcing the Greentown summer interns.
Where would you like me to stand?
Voting.
In my backseat of the camera. In kind of the end of the camera, right? Hello, um, good evening. I'm, uh, Gary Headman, Los Altos resident and, uh, I'm a member with Green Los Altos. I'm here to report on the summer internship program with Greentown, which just started, um, Monday. And we have four interns. Two of them are working with me on getting some background information on, so, uh, to help, uh, Tanya and Rashina uh, with the Tree City USA application. Uh, they are, uh, what are their names? They're Alex, um, Hoffman and Oscar Johnson. They are rising seniors at Los Altos High School. So we had the meeting, honey, to kick it off, and then I was actually able to, uh, take contact with the person who manages Tree City USA as part of the Arbor Day Foundation. And she, I asked her if we could get, and she's very excited about this, by the way. She thinks it's great that the public is helping the staff do this, get the background information, but, uh, I asked her for the names and contact information of cities that are comparable to Los Altos, same size and, uh, tree budget. And she came back and there was forty-two. There are three thousand five hundred cities that are in Tree City USA, that these forty-two are a good fit for us. There are several in California, and there are a couple of nearby ones, Santa Clara and, and La Barra. Surprisingly, not Palo Alto. Anyway, uh, this, the interns will reach out to them, these contacts, find out what has worked well, what the metrics are to measure success. And they have an interesting program where they, uh, can collect rewards if you meet certain milestones or achievements. And there are several cities that have collected awards over the years. One is Southern California, but to me, anyway, some of these have been around for twenty-five, thirty years. And they have a long track record of what works. You know, it's gonna be really exciting to find out what that is. And so the, uh, the interns will start reaching out to them this week and hopefully get some answers back and start compiling it. Uh, the goal then is, of course, to provide information to Tanya. And I'd like to meet with Tanya and Rashina at some point along the way for feedback and input. But the goal is to present to the Environmental Commission. Uh, you don't have a July meeting, but, uh, they are willing to come back in August, even though that's past the end of the internship. In fact, it's the first week of school, but they said, we'll make, we'll make time to come on August fourteenth and give a short presentation to this group. So that's the status of our summer internship program, and I'm looking forward to being, having a good report for you. Item number two, since I'm here. The, I leave the summer solstice night by a ride. That's coming up on June twentieth. But if you want to join me, we leave from Pete's Coffee, go out to Baylands, watch the sunset, come back on the Seabreeze Creek Trail. It's, uh, it's a lot of fun. Last year, coming back on the Seabreeze Creek Trail, the frogs are out in full force. It is amazing how much noise they can make. So, hope you can join me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Is it August fifteenth?
August fourteenth.
Intervent, okay.
Uh, the internship ends in July, but they'll come back. They'll make the point of it.
So do we need to add that to the agenda?
Um. Yes, if. Yes. We need to vote on that later.
We'll vote on it later?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I think that's it from the public. Um, next, uh, has everybody reviewed the minutes from the last meeting? Did I miss something?
Five of the minutes.
Yes. Um, I move to approve the minutes. I stick on that.
Okay. All right, so minutes have passed.
Excellent. Moving on quickly, um, the next item is a special presentation by Mission Trail.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so. Videos.
Yep, so we have, um, Louis Polt Greeney on Zoom, who will be presenting today, and then, um, we also have Tim here, who will All right, Louis, you ready? You're unmuted.
You're unmuted.
Okay, there we go. Good evening. Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. My apologies for not being there in person this evening, but, uh, I, um, gonna been asked to talk a little about, about plastic recycling and, uh, what's the potential for Los Altos, uh, to, uh, expand on, uh, plastic recycling. A little background first, I'm, uh, one of the principals and, uh, President of Mission Trail Waste Systems. I'm also involved with multiple other hauling companies around the Bay Area. And we operate two large material recovery facilities, one in, uh, San Leandro and one in, uh, San Carlos. Uh, we probably process almost a thousand tons a day of recyclable material through those facilities for, I would guess, uh, twenty other communities around the Bay. Uh, I'm, uh, resident of Los Altos since nineteen sixty-nine, uh, proud to be, uh, providing service there. Our contract started in twenty-ten, uh, got renewed in twenty-twenty. And we're, uh, good for another, uh, I think, eight years, uh, and hopefully beyond. So, um, little background on how Los Altos is doing in, in the recycling, uh, arena. Um, I've reported previously to the environment committees. I don't think I've presented with any of the current members on this, uh, report, uh, type of, uh, activity. So, and Los Altos is a population thirty thousand four hundred and twenty-four as a twenty-twenty-two. About eighty-nine hundred, uh, single-family homes, uh, multifamily and commercial units are all kind of wrapped into, uh, the tonnages or diversion, uh, calculations that, um, from my perspective, um, in twenty-twenty-three, we handled thirty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-five tons, uh, in our collection systems in Los Altos. That doesn't account for any, uh, construction and demolition material that's done by, uh, contractors for residents or commercial that haul their own material. I don't have any of those numbers available to me. Um, and out of that thirty-seven thousand tons in twenty-twenty-three, twenty percent or seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine tons were landfill directly. Uh, thirteen percent of recyclable material collected in the blue bins or four thousand seven hundred and eighty-two tons are organic material, uh, generated in the green carts. Fifty-eight percent of that thirty-seven thousand were twenty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-two tons. Uh, bulky material, the white bags that you see on the curb that the residents could, uh, call for twice a year was a four percent of the total, eleven hundred and fifty tons. And the construction and demolition that we haul from, uh, customers in the city was five percent, sixteen thousand eighty-two tons. Um, plastic total that was actually sold from the recycling stream was four point five percent of that, uh, recycling tonnage. That was made up of the PET, uh, type material, two point four percent, and, uh, HDPE, one point nine eight percent, and number five at point zero four percent. And also out of those blue carts or the recycling stream, we use the term residue. That's material that is not marketable, contaminated, um, or too small to be collected in a, uh, real format to be remarketed. That's twenty-three point four or five percent in twenty-twenty-three. So, plastic by the tonnage is a relatively small, uh, weight-wise material. Um, it is, uh, the number one PET and number two HDP has the most value. After we've collected and processed it, uh, the PET has a value of thirteen hundred and twenty-four dollars a ton and the HDPE, two hundred and fourteen dollars a ton. Currently, the number five is a negative cost after we've handled it. And a broker has moved it to a market. We pay twenty-seven dollars a ton to have that, uh, go away. Number three and through number seven plastics, there's zero value for that. No one's, uh, uh, buying it. And, um, just for other notice, uh, glasses has a value of seventy-seven dollars a ton. Aluminum at two thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars a ton. And a lot of that's driven by the CRV value. Uh, that's the deposit when you buy the container and, uh, we get a rebate on that when we sell it to the, uh, processors through the state system. So that's basically where Los Altos is on a broader picture. It, Los Altos is, has one of the highest recycling rates in the county. Uh, the best recycling rate historically has come from Los Altos Hills, which is basically a bedroom community. There's no commercial establishments. In comparison, Saratoga and Los Altos has a similar commercial, the residential racial. And, uh, we are just a bit above them on the pounds per day is one of the calculations uh, that the state does. So, uh, Los Altos, we should all be proud of the great job, uh, we've been doing over the years there. Um, when it comes to the plastic, I think we, uh, made available a few, uh, articles and some, uh, uh, sheets out of the proposed, uh, by law now, uh, SB fifty-four that was passed in June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two that focuses on, uh, single-use packaging and identifies materials that will be, communities will be obligated to collect in any collection system. Um, that's in my mind a saving grace for everybody in the world, or California, it's a law in California to find a home for the plastic and be able to, uh, market it and, uh, put it to better use. This legislation's been in the works for a lot of years. Extended producer responsibility is a, a term that's used in that regard. Um, plastic has always been a hot issue. Uh, I think our articles reflected that, uh, the oil companies really control it. It's, uh, the term recycling plastics has really been a, a public relations, uh, effort by the oil companies. Uh, there's so many different types of plastic and chemicals and abilities to recycle it. It makes it very difficult to, uh, really have a, a sound infrastructure for recycling all the different types of plastics. The PED and HDP have always been, uh, easy to recycle, uh, and has had the most value. It's been a roller coaster ride on most of recycling commodities over the years. Um, we've moved, uh, plastic previously. The outlet for the whole United States and Europe was always China. Uh, they passed a, uh, term, the China Sword, where they eliminated all importing of, uh, they still use the term garbage, but all the plastic that was going to China stopped. And, um, it's, there's really been no home for it, uh, long-term legitimate home. Uh, a lot of material's been shipped offshore way back when the, the electronic waste became a big issue. Well, that was getting shipped to Africa, who knows where, what they were doing with it over there. No one knew. Uh, um, and, uh, same thing with plastic. It was going to China. There was whole provinces just dealing with plastic. And their processes and what they did afterwards, uh, I don't think we really knew then, and we know now it's been, uh, actually recycles it, but those markets have not existed. Um, SB fifty-four, the goal is, um, to cut single-use plastic by twenty-five percent. That means eliminate, uh, the plastic even being, uh, sold into the markets for useful products to recycle sixty-five percent of the single-use plastic and ensure that a hundred percent of the single-use plastic that's made in the future is either recyclable or compostable. But this law really shifts the burden from the consumers or, in our world, the haulers that have to handle it, to the producers. The producers of these single-use plastic products will have to put up five billion dollars over the next ten years to, uh, cut plastic pollution, support disadvantaged, low-income and rural communities hurt most by the impacts of the plastic waste. And they have to, uh, pay all implementation costs. So, it's on them to prove that the product that they're selling has a, a market. And in theory, with the, the cost, they have to support that market. So the material that we collect and prepare for the markets will be a value to cover the cost of, uh, what they have to do to support the recycling of the, the plastic products. Um, I don't know if I'm going too fast or any questions right now. Uh, I got it. Some more detail to talk about. So, uh, maybe I'll move straight into that if there's any questions right now.
Any questions? Okay, keep going, Louis.
Okay. So, in the documents we sent out, the one that was identified covered material category list, page eight through, uh, and twelve, no, uh, twelve, halfway through twelve, identifies, uh, plastic. Now, the general public, when you say plastic, from my experience, is, they look at it all the same. There was a chasing arrows prevalent on a lot of containers in the past. But, you know, plastics described as bottle jugs and jars. Clear and natural bottle jugs and jars is pigmented color, thermofor, form containers, cups, lids, plates, trays, tubes, rigid items, flexible and film items, bottles. That, those first group are all PET, number one. Then you move into number two. You got the same categories, bottle jugs and jars. Uh, clear and pegmented colors, bales and buckets, rigid items, flexible film items, rigid items, and starting with number three, uh, LDP, low-density polyethylene, even piece PVC items. And the state at this point has identified what they believe is potentially recyclable or potentially compostable. And in theory, there's plastics that even the state believes will never really be recyclable or compostable. Those pages identify which of those are the material, the type of product they are in. This, they've created a PRO, uh, Producers Responsibility Organization that's charged with figuring out how to implement all this. They have meetings. Three of my, uh, industry counterparts sit on the, the committee that's helping them, uh, form all the do's and don'ts and figure out how they're gonna pay for all this and make it work. The timeline with this is a little extended. Uh, they want to get by one thirty-two being compliance, but twenty thirty-three, so that's a long ways off. There's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be developed. A lot of tracking and a lot of effort on the producers of this material to have the solution for this material. So, one thing that will affect the city of Los Altos and the customers that when the PRO and all this is defined, if they define a material that's, uh, recyclable or compostable, it has to be collected by the city. Currently, uh, if you look at our material, we didn't, on outreach to the residents and customers, we don't really get into all the fine detail, what type of plastic it is, what it's not. I don't think the average person would, would spend the time to really pay attention to that. But we've identified our material to be collected as, uh, cup, uh, jars, bottles, uh, keep it simple, put it all in, we'll deal with it at the materials recovery. Uh, we used to be able to run with a residue when there was a market. And, uh, there was less plastic to deal with, the ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. A residue was always around fifteen percent. But it's jumped up when trying to sword hit and there's no one buying it. And there's more, just more different types of plastic, uh, in the stream. Um, the, uh, looking at some, uh, numbers from the, uh, where'd that piece of paper go? The average person in the United States generates two hundred and twenty pounds of plastic a year. In Los Altos, I'm proud to say, on the numbers that we collect and sold, uh, every of the thirty thousand people, it's one hundred and nineteen pounds per year. So, you know, every, average for the nation is a little different. What the average would be for California or even Los Altos, I don't have those statistics, but I would say that in Los Altos, we are doing far better in recycling what plastic that's been put into recycling bins than, uh, the rest of the country. So, there's a future. I believe it's really driven by this, uh, SB fifty-four that's gonna create the markets and it's gonna be supported by those, uh, producers of those products. And we will be obligated to collect it. We're getting a lot of that stuff already, but we haven't really publicized all the uh, materials that will be required. So, that's kind of the basics of it. Um, open for questions and uh, I hope I covered it, uh, for your, uh, use right now.
Thanks, Louis. So, uh, towards open for questions?
Yeah, so, um, so I, you know, based on the numbers you gave us, I, I did a quick back of the envelope calculation. I don't know if my math is right, but, uh, it seems like we recycled about sixteen percent of all plastics collected here in Los Altos.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, so, um, which is higher than the national average, which is, which is nine percent. Do you have any explanation for why we're higher than the national average?
Well, a lot of states do not recycle, oh, excuse me, it was two hundred and twenty pounds generated by every red person. We are recycling a hundred and nineteen pounds for every person. But some states do not collect any plastic. The demographics, the economics, uh, of the general areas across the country, I, Los Altos is probably the higher end of economics, uh, people really care. So, the national average is not a really fair way to compare, but it's the only number I could come up with, with the, what the average generation of plastic per person is. Um, we are, it is getting, putting in the blue bins. We are collecting it. We are processing it where there's a market for it. So, uh, these are just a lot of numbers I got off of Google and, uh, from my experience, our own materials recovery facilities, what we are, uh, and drill down in Los Altos's diversion of plastics. Yeah.
So, I have a follow-up question to that question, uh, which is what can, let's forget about SB fifty-four, the what can we do to increase that recyc, recyclable rate from sixteen percent to around twenty-five or thirty percent, which is more like the European average?
Uh, we have to cut buying it and putting it in the waste stream in the first place. Uh, purchasing, uh, decisions by individuals uh, will help reduce what's generated, therefore offsets what might not be recycled. Um, there's a new piece of legislation too about the reusable plastic bags in the grocery stores, might eliminate some of that. So, like the law says, twenty-five percent of generation of use of single-use plastic can be eliminated. Uh, a lot of that's on the consumer's purchasing habits. Um, like I said, I move a lot of material every day. Plastics, we, uh, we work marketed through some of the, some of the bigger players across the nation. We're all in the same boat. Uh, there is no market. There is no end use. There is no value to it. Previously, we were taking our, I use the term junk plastics that we had collected and bailed. We're shipping it to Los Al, uh, Los Angeles. Uh, for a while, there was an idea of a secondary materials recovery facility that would just handle those plastics focused on cleaning them up, getting them baled, trying to market them at a whole. Uh, it failed. Uh, they couldn't economically make it work because the, we, true recyclers, the one that's taking that product, it may get it into another product. And they don't exist. Uh, in the West and across the country. There's people been trying to take the plastic to make it to oil. There's, uh, recycling of plastics could be a mechanical or a heat process or it could be a chemical process. And there's a lot of controversy about chemically recycling plastic. Um, plastic to oil is another one. I, we spent a lot of time researching and accomplished some of that through some pilot programs previously, but it's never, when a barrel of oils goes for a hundred and sixty dollars a barrel, then the economics of recycling plastic starts to make sense. But, uh, plastic material, the cheapest way is to make it out of the virgin material. Trying to recycle it, it gets more expensive. And then the producer of the packaging needs to pay for that, and they're not. They, they, they always go to, uh, the oil-based product. So, it, we could collect it, we can move it, but economically it, it doesn't add up yet. This law will help it make sense economically. And that's really what's, in my opinion, driving the recycling market. We're doing a great job. We could have you throw more material in the bins, but there's no market for it. And when there's no market, you can only store so much. And eventually it ends up in the landfill, which the market for landfilling around the Bay Area right now is about fifty, sixty dollars a ton plus transportation to move it after processing it out of the single-stream blue bin. So it's, uh, and that would all affect ratepayers one way or another.
So just to clarify some of the numbers again, you said, uh, you processed about a thousand tons of recyclable materials on deals that are recycled per day? And is that four and a half percent of that is plastic that is sold?
That, that could be a fair number across the board. Like I said, we have quite a few different, uh, communities that we service in, uh, Samhail County, Alameda County and Contra Costa County, plus Santa Clara County. So, every one of those communities over the years might have a little different collection process, what they accept, what they don't accept. So, what came in could vary city by city, but, uh, uh, like I said.
How much, approximately how much of the plastic that goes into recycle bins eventually gets, I mean, pound-wise, eventually goes to, uh, the landfill? Do you have a sense of?
Uh, I would be guessing, but my guess is, when we had a market in China and we were trying to move, send everything we could to China and they were taking it, we were running a fifteen percent residual number. That means material that we process, fifteen percent was going to landfill. Now we're up to twenty-three percent. So, uh, is it all plastic? I can't uh, really say, but, uh.
I just wanted to clarify your question. I think I understand what you're asking. So that four point five percent of recycling tonnage that gets recycled, that's PET, HDPE, number five. Is that four point five percent of the thirteen percent that went to the blue bins, or is that four point five percent of the thirty-seven K tons?
We've sold those percentage of plastics. Are what we've sold. Out of the blue bin. So that's material that was the right kind of material that we were able to recover. And marketed, so.
Thirteen percent minus four point five, if you want to go to the landfill.
Yeah, the thirteen percent recycling includes the paper, the bottles, the glass, the aluminum cans. Total of materials. Out of that, four point five cents, four point five percent was marketable plastics.
Yeah, so you have about um seventy plus percent of what's in the recyclables. The paper, cartons, glass. Aluminum cans and so, and of that significant portion of recyclables. Um, how much do you recycle of paper, cotton, aluminum? Glass is that, I think it's a pretty high percentage, right?
The fiber is the heaviest, the glass is heavier. The aluminum cans are lighter, the thing about plastic, there's no weight. When we look at tonnage wise, there's a lot of plastic visually and volume wise, but it doesn't weigh much. I'd have to spend more time really digging down and breaking up the. Lost Altus stream of material, like I said, these are numbers on the MRF that take in material from a lot of different communities.
So one one clarifying question about the recyclables and what's in the. In the in the blue bin. What is, what's not plastic, which is basically paper, glass, aluminum, cartons. Mostly that, that's what's the recycle 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 rate of those items? How how many of those of the seventy percent that's in the? In the blue bin, how much of those do you recycle? What's the percentage of? Of recyclables in there?
Uh, fiber is. The fiber is ea- the fiber is easy to divert, clean up, get into bail and be marketing. So the residual on the fibers in maybe one or two percent. Uh, if it's really contaminated, uh, it gets pulled out. O C C is another big volume cardboard. And these numbers include some commercial streams. The glass is easy, but in the process of putting it in the blue bin, running it to our plants. A lot of that gets broken into little pieces. You know, because your fingernail, so that material is hard to capture. But we capture it and send it to a secondary processor, which is a a glass uh factory. And in any process, there's some always some out throws. But that percentage of glass that doesn't make it to a market. It's really an unknown, it's very hard to calculate, we get little rocks, we get dirt, nails. You know, there's a a two inch minus stream that gets all contaminated with shredded paper. It's very difficult to. Get it a hundred percent on the fiber product, the glass product. Um, aluminum cans, we have Eddie current manual, that's the most valuable, and we don't let it any of that. End up in the landfill after we've collected and handled it and processed it. We get metal and tin. What's the other big one? That's about it, so two inch minus percentage, very difficult to say. How much that really adds up to, that's part of the twenty three point four five percent residue. And then just other stuff that doesn't belong in there, you know, you wouldn't believe what we see at the materials recovery coming over the over the belts. Concrete, you know, uh, car tires, wheels, you know, it whatever, sometimes whatever fit in the bin, people will put it in.
I I actually, the user question on that, is it better if if a resident is unsure if it's recyclable? Or it can't be cleaned or something, is it better to throw? A number seven plastic in the garbage then to try and clean it and put it in the recycling bin when there's a low chance it's gonna get recycled?
My belief is, because the markets change, material changes. If there's, if they put it in the gray bin that's going to the landfill, that's it, it's over. But if something's in question. And new products come along or changes, put it in the blue bin. At that point, markets get better or technology changes, we have a chance to keep it out of the landfill. And trying to re-educate people in programs. Very difficult, we, people move in from other cities with other programs and, you know, it's confusing. The state is mandated color coding on the bins, you know. Gray or black for landfill, blue for recycling, green for organic, that's a plus right there. That should help keep stuff in the right streams, so I've always. Professed, if there's any question, put it in the blue bin. If we could capture it, market it, that's our job, that's our motivation too. So that's that's my answer to that one, in question, put it in the blue bin.
Yeah, are you still screening the gray bins to capture aluminum cans, things that can easily be captured?
With the percentage of diversion that we're getting from Los Altus residents. What makes it into the gray bin, I believe is minimal. But the cost to process the great bin is over two hundred and fifty dollars a ton. So there there's facilities that will take the gray bin and run it over line and try and pull out what they can. But that is a very expensive process. Source separation by the uh consumer or the generator. Is the cheapest, most efficient way to get the material segregated.
So you're saying the gray bin does not get separated?
The gray bin, when we collect in Los Altos, goes straight to the landfill.
So if we're not sure, unless it's, you know, rotting food, put it in the blue bin. That's right, right, yeah, okay.
I just want to make a clarification, I, but so if. There's a lot of like information about wh- wish cycling. I don't know if you're.
Yes.
You wanna turn Lily, and are you guys asking about wish cycling, or are you asking about numbers one through seven? And I, you do you think even if it's like doesn't have a recycling number or it doesn't have a recycle sign, that they should still throw it in the trash can? I mean, in the recycle bin?
So I think the chasing arrows is going away on some products, that was never an officially. Mandated uh marking system. But the problem is you could have a clamshell type of container. And it could be the wrong type of plastic. If you and you could have a clamshell as the right kind of plastic that's marketable. Wishful thinking. Lot of uh manufacturers, producers, oh, we could recycle it, we could recycle it and. Technically, chemically, the compounds might be able to recycle, but if there's no market. Ultimately, it's not going to be made into a new product. And, you know, people believe that. A material should go back to similar type of product, you know, if you get a clamshell. You should be able to take that clamshell and make it into a new clamshell, well, it doesn't quite work that way, you know, you got cosmetic containers. Health and safety issues. It's really the type of plastic that really drives the true. Uh, recyclability of the product and then the markets associated with the. Getting it to someone to recycle it technically. Um, it it's very confusing, I've been at this for fifty years. My grandfather, my father, that, you know, we always diverted material recyclables. Uh, but the type of plastics that come on board, the laminated products, uh the little juice. Pouches, the uh the cartons, um. All those manufacturers that product are gonna have to. Either pay for the market to make it recyclable, or they're gonna pay up to fifty thousand dollars a day fine. If they market that material into California. So as a consumer, I think the type of containers we're gonna see on the shelves eventually is gonna change.
With cosmetics, that's a good example of like what usually is not recyclable, like makeup products. Would you say even still to throw it in the recycle bin if it's plastic and it's a. Cosmetic makeup thing, or would you just?
Um, it depends on what size it is. You know, if it's a small size, our screens are like two inches, so anything under two inches falls through a screen. Then it gets more complicated, it gets more contaminated with other items. Uh shampoo bottles, you know, uh. Little pill bottles, I don't know about that, you know, there's people saying they can recycle toothbrushes. They can recycle pen barrels, I don't believe it, you know, the cost to uh. Get those segregated, get it to the market, what type of plastic it is, it's not proven, that's what I call wishful recycling.
Can I have just one more question? On off the three, four, six, seven, the other ones that that go to the residue, you know, is there? Any that's kind of marginal where, you know, you're. At, you know, if you pay fifty dollars to landfill material per ton, that will cost you less than fifty dollars to recycle it?
You're, we're in the business of making money, but at the same time, we use the our. Offset the cost to provide service to our customers by the value we get for this material, yeah, we look at the. You know, the disposal cost in that residue versus. We we have paid to get material diverted and handled someplace else. But like I said earlier, the pilot program in L A that they were unsuccessful too. Those type of materials be to mean to be touched by a human hand. We've deployed robots in our facilities, but every piece has to be touched by a human hand. And, you know, our labor costs for a. A sorter on a sort line is. The wage is thirty three dollars an hour. And they can only make so many picks a day. An hour, and then that product has to have. Be put in the storage area until you can get a bail. And then that bail to market has got to be eight hundred or twelve hundred pound bail. So the cost to segregate those little pieces of plastic. Uh, a baggie, a. You know, a cheese wrapper on American cheese, that that that's very expensive. And you gotta store it, and you gotta store it on the roof, so this is the stuff that. S B fifty four is gonna look at the cost. To handle and get the product to a. End market that they need to support the manufacturers of this product, so there will be a value to it, I hope, down the road. Uh, that will offset that cost to keep it out of the rate pairs or the taxpayers' cost, that's what part of this bill was about. So we've looked at everything, um. Like I said, we did plastic to oil, styrofoam is another very expensive one. You gotta look, and there's so many different materials out there, but. Just handling it and storing it is an expensive proposition with the value of land in the Bay Area now.
So you're saying none of the three, four, six, seven is even worth considering as a future. Material that would be recycled.
Just like tires and some plastic in other countries, they put all those in the the term waste to energy plants. They have high P T U value, basically, the that plastic is oil. It creates energy, but then you got air quality issues associated with that. And then it's going after that, you know, the. Uh, it could be more cost effective if it went to waste energy. And it wouldn't end up in a landfill, but there's other issues associated with those alternative technologies, priologists. Uh, it it's a balancing act and it changes over time. The East Coast, they burn all that plastic in Germany. They get a lot of diversion, but everything else goes to a waste energy plant generating electricity. I don't see any of those type of plants co- coming in in line in California.
Would you be able to tell us where uh Los Altos Way to Go, where the landfills are that we divert to currently, and do you have a general idea of the capacity of those landfills?
So the city of Los Altos has a contract with the Newby Island landfill in Milpitas, owned by Republic. I believe they just signed another. Ten fifteen year contract. It has a capacity. With the mandate of nine thirty nine and all the recycling over the years that we've accomplished, the landfills have lost volume to the. Uh, recycling stream, so they they have airspace, the landfill is associated with airspace. Our material that goes to our MRF in. San Lando is where Los Altos material goes, it has had a, went to Vasco Re- Road landfill out of Livermore. And in the future, it's going to Altamont Pass landfill in Livermore also. So there's plenty of capacity for disposal in and around the Bay Area right now.
Right, so just compost and landfill go to Newby. Recyclables go to.
Any other questions?
I just want to ask a general question, it may not be just. So we understand the number three to seven, uh, they are not, I mean, there's no demand. So what kind of progress have you seen in terms of manufacturing who makes? Plastic containers that they are. Moving towards more and more to the recyclable plastic. Rather than falling into those carrier category that no one wants it. What kind of progress have already been made over time, maybe you can tell us like three to five years from what you. From what you have observed.
I uh, yeah, I look in my refrigerator, I look at the grocery store, so. Why are they using that type of container?
Right.
A good, a good example, a milk carton, you have the. Carton type material, the waxed uh paper, you have the H D P E. Which is the white jug with the handle, and you have the Fairlight milk, well, that's in a P T E container. So why do these dairies or who's selling the milk? Why did they choose different, three different types of containers? I gotta believe it's economics on their part. And I think it's the same way with those other plastics, if everybody used P E T or H D P E, we'd have no problem. But when they come in with these different types of plastic, is it lighter? Well, film plastic is a whole different animal, but when we talk to containers, a cottage cheese container. Uh, I don't know what number that is, but it's not P E T or H D P, so these producers. They're creating a problem by what they choose to sell their product in. And if we buy that product, we're contributing to it, but we as a consumer, we gotta deal with it at the end. So I don't know if what you asked has really been tracked. We know the plastic industry is a byproduct of oil drilling, their production. Has increased substantially and they're planning on producing a lot more plants to make plastic. Containers and products. Then you get to the plastic toys and, you know, the. Things you buy that are sealed in that heavy other duty plastic, that's a whole different animal. So, you know, I think it's consumer trends on what they purchase could change. Uh, the type of container it comes in and the type of plastic and whether it's truly recyclable or not.
I guess I just have one final question, or maybe there's no one, but uh, one question, it it sounds like Los Altos residents do pretty well overall. But is there any uh top of mind suggestion you would make on any of the three? Uh, streams, the the composting, the trash or the recycling that would improve our environmental impact overall? Is there anything obvious that we can do or that we need to educate the residents about?
Well, the other one on thirteen eighty three in the organic stream. Uh, the residents put their food scraps in a green container with yard waste. The state's mandated that we go out and study the participation in that, who's participating? We just had one round at the in the fall of last year, and from my experience and. Uh, we do have cameras in all the trucks, so. Every time a container is dumped in a truck, we could see what's in that streaming material. And with A I now, we're, you know, the ability to. When a container gets dumped in front of your house, we'll be able to tell if those people are participating with the food scraps. I believe educating people and to put more effort in getting the food scraps. I believe educating people and to put more effort in getting the food scraps. Out of the gray container into that green container, I think there's an upside to that. But that's a yuck factor for a lot of people and, um, it. But I think that's where the real upside, upsides is right now in uh, Los Altos. And even the plastic, if we got it all, it, like I said earlier, everything's based on tons. It doesn't add up to a lot of tons. So, and that's the way that state gauges everything is on tonnage. Uh, but my opinion is organics. Food waste scraps diversion into the green bin is a, a real upside potential. And in theory, with the way states monitoring, if they identify a customer, they'll give some warnings and there's potential fines down the road with that. Legislation that's been in place.
Great, uh, any other questions?
Add kind of, I think what you can do as residents is supporting the legislation of like. Um, uh. Making with forty people, um. Supporting legislation that's reducing the different types of plastic. You know, um, being aware of what you can do in that sense and then also like. Buying bulk, reducing how much plastic you buy. Shopping at many food stores, which is one of the places also, um. And doing like all those kinds of things and like choosing reusable, bring your own. Bring your own cup to the coffee shop, like supporting those measures and then. Like, you know, social norms and making those things normal, um. Because we live in a very convenient space society is, is, you know, does wonders. So, like practicing those things, bringing your own cup to the coffee shop. And then just like, you know, I think can really um, triple down in impact.
I'll just add to that and repeat what Louis said is that I think one of the biggest things that we can do is keep. Um, food waste compostable materials out of the gray bins because that not only adds to the landfill. It causes um, the generation of methane in the landfill, which is. A, one of a large, larger proportion of methane gas sources are linked to the atmosphere.
Great, well, thank you very much, that was very uh, helpful and thought provoking, uh. We appreciate your time quite a bit, thank you.
Anytime, I will come back if you need more.
Great.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to the natural items, I guess, uh.
Uh, sorry, informational item, yeah.
Uh, yeah, moving on to the informational items, I think we are going to talk about the E V fair again and, and see what progress. Uh, was made in, in thinking about alternatives. To the city who's supporting it. The fans are very.
Yes. Um, so yeah, did everyone get a chance to review um, the items in the agenda? The second board and so forth, so essentially, I was just summarizing, you know, our previous discussions and. Um, I think we were asked for how much, how many hours were put into um. Planning the event, so I provided a pretty comprehensive document or scope of work on that. And essentially, um, if the commission does move, that this would be a volunteer led event. Um, the city is prepared to provide, um. Marketing, you know, as defined in the staff report. Um, coordinate banner reservations, provide the event location being the community center. Um, assisting with a special event permit, providing staff assistance for setup and breakdown, provide chairs, tables, canopies, and then. With an M T W S. Um, and then. Essentially, um. I guess we're just waiting to hear back if, you know. That is what the commission wants, but I know also Carl has some. Information that he wanted to present on in terms of. Um. The. Farmer's market. So let me just pull that up on the screen.
Start by just saying, um, you know, I'm in correspondence with Sir Asher on the Complete Street Commission, he was who. From Greentown worked with us for the last two uh, E V events, um, and. Basically, he could share that, uh, if they, they, they would have a hard time being able to lead an event solo. Um, but they are looking at. The possibility of forming a coalition with little organizations uh, to be able to take on all the tasks. Um, and so, uh, you know. I am hopeful that uh. There might be an update on those efforts in September, um, but. Certainly cannot say for certain whether uh, anybody's ready to take on uh, the brunt of. Uh, what the city helped with.
Wait, uh, you were updating on the farmer's market?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide some updates on the, the farmer's market.
So then, yeah, in terms of farmer's market, um, I thought I would independently think about ideas last time we met.
Oh.
Yeah, so that, I don't know.
It's separate, right? We want to talk about the E V first?
It's part of this item.
Oh, I see, I see. Yeah, so it's an alternative to the E V fair. One of the alternatives.
Yes, it would be either or. Um, the, the volunteer led E V fair. Or whatever's proposed at the farmer's market. Or a volunteer led E V fair and then the city does help with a table at the farmer's market. So you're saying, would it be us offering? Or supporting in the way that was listed in the staff report as well as doing the farmer's market? Um.
No, so it's, the city staff is only gonna help with one, which is what we discussed last time. So, um, either we'll do the E V fair or we'll do the farmer's market, we're not gonna do both, we can't. The bandwidth is just not there, um, so the commission will lead, um. One or the other, um, in its entirety, or we will step away from it and try the, um, essentially pilot of. Doing the farmer's market, um, for a series.
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm dense, I'm not quite understanding that, so, uh, the. I'm under the impression you're saying you will not support the E V fair moving forward as, as a two to three hundred hour. Uh.
You know, continuing to.
Continue, you're not going to continue to leave the E V fair, is that right? That, that's what you have said.
It seems to be.
Is that, is that, is that what you said?
That's correct, I mean, it's extremely.
Yeah, so what I, what I saw on your document is it looks like you've been providing like two to three hundred hours. You're willing to provide about forty hours. That's what you're willing to provide for the E V fair. Well, I, I quickly estimated the items you put down and tried to math them, and it was like. You're willing, the ci- the city is willing to provide about forty to fifty hours of support. Just roughly, I, I think about it in terms of that. Uh, is that right? That's, that's the ceiling.
Okay, if we're also gonna be doing then the, the farmer's market.
Exactly, so then, if, if we limit it to fifty hours and you will support. Other activities, whether it's farmer's markets or I think some other people have some other ideas. Okay, so. Our goal is to limit it to fifty hours of staff time, but then we also get another vehicle potentially to do other outreach with her, whatever we come up with, right?
That was not my understanding. Um, my. So we're still doing the, the farmer's market on E V or anything?
I don't know.
I think the question is, are you agnostic about? Where the E V fair and electrification information is happening as long as the hours. Stay within the constraint? Or is it? Not going to. Support two things, not gonna support both. Forty hours at the E V fair and. Some hours at the farmer's market.
I think that if we're doing the farmer's market and we're planning it and leading that and also doing the E V fair, it's equal to just us planning. The E V fair. That, the, but, and again, when I proposed this in April, it was more of like, does the commission want me spending that time on that?
Right, right, no, no, so I'm, I'm just trying to understand our envelope, right, of, of support from the city. And, and so I don't, I don't think I quite understand, again, I'm kind of dense, so the, um. If we confuse, you know, the only one. Yeah, yeah, so if, I'm gonna give you a couple scenarios and you guys can tell me if this is realistic, so. One scenario is Greentown steps up with a coalition of other organizations. But it will still require forty to fifty hours of staff time, that's not gonna happen without some element of city staff. And it may be, uh, E V fair may be an electrification fair, but it's going to be a one-time fair with, uh. Fairly significant attendance hopefully at the right time of year and, and it would be a big event. Um.
Uh, my fair certification, it wouldn't be. But what was proposed is for an E V fair. Because if we're doing something else, then the graphic designer would have to completely do new graphics and all that kind of stuff.
So if we keep it as destination electric and still have E Vs but add other things which are electric. Electrification like we started to do, so that's just the general category of electrification.
That's an electric, yeah, that's okay, that still falls within a reasonable.
Right, so it's an electrification fair. Hmm. And then a separate thing for the farmer's market where maybe we can hear out. Call and see if there is other things within the purview of sustainability. That can be table at the farmer's market to do reach out. And can the city support some of that depending on how much it is, right? Is that?
That's kind of what I'm asking, can we still hold a destination if we offload most of the work to Greentown and everywhere else? And, and whoever else will step up, which I, I don't know if that's realistic or not, but that's potential. And then still do the farmer's market or some other, like two or three other smaller events throughout the year. Um, uh, that are very small and directed, nothing like the E V fair. Uh, that, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is there, if, if we kill the E V fair or offloaded, do we still have staff? Support for city support for smaller events throughout the year, whether it's farmer's market or some other item? Or are you guys saying you get forty to fifty hours total? For these type of events, and, and I think that's the guidance we need because it's very hard for us to plan. Or even think about this other way, at least for me, it's hard for me to think about, without understanding what the envelope is of, of your support.
Yeah, it'd be better maybe to, to figure out if there was a total event.
Budget.
Event and outreach budget in terms of time. What would that be?
I think it's a valid question, and I guess we're having discussion, this is pre for all, but I think it's a valid question, but I think the. At the end of the day, they, they can come up with an event number. There's still a, the same amount of staff time, so we have to acknowledge that.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever we, if we put a lot of. Burden on staff for events, it's coming out of something else sustainability.
Agreed, then that's, uh.
So I, I, I think it's a little bit of a red herring, I, I mean. I think if we said, we really, you know, this is what we think is the best thing for sustainability, then. Maybe there would be the staff time to go along with it, but that means.
Something else. Yeah.
So yeah, so it's reason we brought this up is, is we are agnostic to what the commission wants, again. The way that I am looking at it is from staff hours, so if I'm taking some staff hours away from the E V fair and putting it in something else that requires just amount of time. That were, I'm back to square one, so it is up to you in based on that understanding. Whether you want someone else to plan the E V fair and then us to do, to do these farmer's markets, because this is also gonna take time. Which, and, and it's gonna be a whole new thing, whereas the E V fair, we already know what we're doing.
Yes. Well, one question on that, um, so in terms of. One of the options that came up is there's a person who actually goes around and does these events. Uh, but he costs eight to twelve thousand dollars, um. Is that? I mean, we've never talked about budget for the, uh, what?
Is it part of that or part?
For that, so he would, I think they would charge eight to ten thousand to organize the E V fair, obviously, we. I just, that was a number turnaround, I didn't go through a scope of work and understand what this person does, but. He clearly would organize vendors, uh, if we were bringing in the E Vs, he would organize the E Vs and whatever. He would organize the event from soup to nuts, I think. Uh, but then he would depend on the city, of course, to help get the space and insurance and all that stuff, so there would still be time. Provided from you, but I don't think it's a lot. At least in terms of work, is that something we would consider? Again, we've never talked about budget. For this type of thing or whether we even have access to that? But that, that I think is also an option we could think about.
Well, the issue of the council authorizes fifty thousand dollars in this year's upcoming budget, so I mean, that is an electrification component. Um, you know, again, I know the, the subcommittee is kind of working on. Whatever it is that their recommendation is ultimately gonna be, but, I mean. Previous discussions, we've had very linear discussion about, it's almost like rebate driven or like how. It, it's, it's about electrification, so I mean, there, it's, it's just like when we kind of talk in planning of like building affordable housing. It's supposed to be a toolbox, it's not supposed to be, you know, a one size or one approach circumstance, so. Um, I mean, if that's what the commission values as a part of, um, you know, thinking that it's gonna help, um. Incentivize or. Push more information out, then we can definitely consider that, um. But it's not in addition to the fifty thousand, it's we would.
No, no, I understand, we have, we have a bucket of money and if we decide to do that, that's ten thousand that comes out of the bucket, right?
Yeah. Oh yeah, I did actually bring that up and I brought up numbers in April and the numbers we got for, from. I specifically brought the example of City of Sunnyvale and it cost them like eighteen to twenty thousand. So, are you talking about E V to plan? Like a ride and drive E V fair?
Um, I don't think we would do this, uh, I, again, I didn't do a scope of work, we just, somebody said there's a person who does this. Uh, and their cost is eight to twelve pounds.
Yeah, there's E V education, there's Actara that they do.
Just a, a guy.
Okay.
And, and again, that's also, that tells to, um, um, electrification subcommittee, which is also. One of the recommendations, so, yeah.
Yeah.
And we can all play together.
Yeah. Um, so.
I think maybe we need to close the discussion on the E V fair. Which I think.
Well, the Luna Moore and.
Yeah.
Obviously, September, maybe you table that.
I just want to ask one clarifying question, in terms of the things that you mentioned that the city could. Prepare, be prepared to still support, you mentioned the advertised materials, if. Greentown and their, in a coalition that maybe forms. Decide that they can redo materials to match. You know, the whatever, new look, whatever, i- is, is the city comfortable, uh. You know, dropping that form of support, like, or, or is it that it has to be all, everything on that list?
No.
In your mind, okay.
No, it will seem to be, I think it could be.
Yeah, the only, the catchall is just like, if, if the city like. Seal is gonna be on something, we get blast lap, even if we're not paying for it, like essentially, that's.
You, you have to review it, you, you will, you absolutely want to review it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
All right. Well, um, this has been up on the screen way too long, but I can talk about it now, um. Yeah, so I just last time said that I.
Nobody said.
Oh, and then. Uh, yeah, I said last time, I just wanted to start the process of thinking about what those look like, because to me, I just think we have to have some. Interactive element for it to really, uh, catch people's eye, and so this is just a, a thought starter. You know, on the, on the left, a bunch of topics that we have talked about, you know, in some form, if I were to adjust these now after. I went this through my head in the last hour, single-use plastic twover ordinance would be that, uh, green one there at the top. And then recycling would probably include zero waste, just to, uh, you know, broaden the actual message. Um. But, uh, yeah, I just, and some of these things, you know, it like involve a wheel and the idea would be that. You know, you could, you could have stuff that could be reused and also. The, the more we're able to plan ahead on this, the more that we can be borrowing stuff rather than having to, you know, uh, buy stuff and. You know, generate waste in the process of this, so that's, to me, it's like, the, the, the more we think ahead and start saying, yes, we want to do this, then. You know, the more I can also support. and start saying, yes, we want to do this, then, you know, the more I can also support in terms of uh, maybe where we get the materials and such. So. Yeah.
And I just want to add to that, is that like anything that's in the pipeline, like the single-use plastics ordinance that's gonna go to council, like dark skies, we already will be tabling for for them. That's part of like outreach. So like.
Yeah.
Will be tabled at the farmer's market. Right now, we have a farmer's market that at this time of year coincides with that outreach. Um, so but if if it isn't, like if there was a time where um, maybe like on a first Friday, we would do it or something that is because we want to reach people via ordinance outreach. So that's just a standard, basically, like a best practice that we would be doing anyway. And the way that I was understanding the farmer's market tabling was strictly to go from um, EV education through an event versus EV education at the farmer's market. So I think, but uh, but we can like expand all of these things.
Yeah, I mean, it it would prove us to do it one of them a second time and, you know, try to improve that potentially reach more people. Then that's good too. But yeah, I just wanted to start to get ideas out there and if other people have something else that jumps out to them, you know, let's uh, I just want to keep the ball rolling. That's all I only reason.
I'll just say I'll support this. I think. Good idea. Pick one thing and engage the public something. Out of time.
Yeah, thank you, Tony. Good good chart to help us think through this.
And the farmer's market ends in August, right?
In September.
End of September, so.
So I don't know about this.
I'm lying. We're coming back to August. I'm not really sure. Are we, this is gonna be for next year?
Does it look like it's gonna be?
It doesn't have to be exhaustive. It can be one, pick a thing right this year and pick five things next year. It doesn't have to be everything every time. That's my my guess.
No, I think we're running out of time this year. Not realistic to, I think we get one or two things in, maybe if we come back in August and have a good plan, um, and then prepare for next year.
Yeah. So actually, we have a table secured for this, this farmer's market?
Yeah, I believe it's ten.
Ten for this year.
Yeah, but we we need to let them know because other people are waiting as well to get their spot. So, yeah.
We have a date for the first one that we.
Xiaoping and I'll be there June twentieth.
We're busy next week.
Oh, you're welcome to join.
Yeah, that's right. We did.
And then the dark sky.
Yeah, dark sky.
But we pick the only going.
We may dress as birds.
Are are you bringing the buffets?
So, I mean, I think.
Who's gonna be in first too? You know.
The feathers.
Yeah, just be creative.
Um, sorry. Twenty wasn't part of the ten. So I I secured the twentieth before we had this discussion about the ten extra ones they um, that was something they added for, um, they were able, I don't even know if next year would, I guess we could do it again next year, but it might not be the same logistics because it was kind of added because we asked for it. So, um.
So I thought, so the ten that we have, those are all consecutive weeks? And there's gaps in there? Okay.
On those, on the dates, yeah.
We're going to know that. And then I would be curious to hear what they thought about in terms of uh, what they want. That's uh, okay to discuss.
Well. Sorry, what?
I think some of those dates are like.
Or we can.
Oh, yeah. We we uh, we have to figure out what we are bringing, but I think we have a um, tablecloth, if I'm not mistaken. The the resources are limited. We we have a table, uh, environmental council or City of Los Altos tablecloth. And then Xiaoping and I are coming up with a couple of handouts and hopefully we will come up with a website as well that people can uh, quickly click on and set the basis of the website. This is a rush job, but I think it's better than you know. Yes, that's different.
Yeah, are there any of the light fixtures that match the dark side work?
Yeah, I haven't uh, thought about it. I'm sure we could uh, round up something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we technically, we're not supposed to have discussion on this uh, because of the arrangement. But I I guess like, so just to clarify, um, we are right now, we're gonna do some farmer's market state since we already have it secured um, for some 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 items. But we're talking about next year, twenty twenty-five, whether we're, the city's helping with an EV fair or we're gonna instead do the farmer's market again. Yeah, that's.
So I think it's still kind of a a a moving decision. I don't think we have all the information from Greentown. Um, yet I I think, I still think it's worth talking about whether we have ten thousand dollars budget in the, in the, maybe the um, electrification subcommittee thinks that's a useful place to spend that money. Uh, so I don't, I don't think we've, I don't, I don't, that's my personal, I don't think we've decided yet. I don't think we have enough information, but hopefully.
Twenty twenty-five though.
Twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Right now, I don't think we'll do the whole ten. We'll probably just.
I think that's fair. I don't see.
Do what we can. And then I need to circle back on the dates and then we.
If you wanted to lay out the ten, I think you would need to know the subject and who's manning the booth during each of those ten.
That's right.
So I don't think we have that at all.
Well, would there be single-use plastics outreach in there?
Yes.
Yes, so that's two out of ten, right?
One, two, presumably.
Yeah.
So I mean, the the real question, I think, is whether we can reasonably believe, we believe that it's reasonable or it can be reasonable to replace the EV fair by ten showing at the farmer's market. I mean, that's that's really the question. Can we achieve the same by a few tables at the farmer's market once, you know, ten ten weeks over whatever it's something the farmer's market. The real question is, can we replace the EV fair by something like that?
Exactly.
That is a question and yeah. And actually, that uh, um, Dawn had sent me an email uh, and that kind of teed up his email. If you want me to share his thoughts, he's not here, but he did send an email.
Yeah, so.
Uh, so a couple things. Um, he had reached out to Silicon Valley Clean Energy to, we thought they might be a natural person that's big enough to take care of the EV fair. They declined because they have too many other events. Uh, and as an example, um, at the Los Altos Arts and Wine Festival, they are having a a tiny home, I think that's what you call it, small home, uh, that is electrified. So they're gonna use to demonstrate uh, home electrification with the tiny home at the Los Altos uh, wine, uh, arts and art wine festival. Uh, so uh, that's kind of why they won't support it. But also, uh, they're pointing out that there's an opportunity for us to work together with them on something like this, either to market or help support it. Um, uh, which is a question of Dawn's, is can we help support that? It's July eighth, I think. So can we get it in, can we get the PIO to mention it in the various letters and everything else that the city's involved? Can we give any?
We, that would have to be an agenda item that we have to talk about. We can't everybody today.
Okay, so that.
July, I think we won't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. But they can reach out to New York.
S V C E can?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we see it.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Great, uh. Uh, so then, uh, I think Dawn feels like, uh, the EV fair was valuable, but it it the feeling is it takes too much time. Some other options are, think about a number of events, a handful of events, whether it's at the farmer's market or not, that align with S V C E, Greentown, other organizations that market and support these things. Get on their calendar and get our weight behind those events. Um, and make those events a bigger splash and maybe utilize the city parking lot, you know, kind of good with the EV fair, but just smaller, a handful of smaller events that we get behind and leverage S V C E and Greentown or whoever else has had these. Um, so that was, that was Dawn's thought. Um, of course, in many point, we have to plan each of these, budget each of these and understand the impact to the city staff time so we don't overdo. I think that's what we all understand. So those were Dawn's thoughts, uh. Okay.
So next meeting, or well, I I will connect, I guess, with you to see if it should be agendized, if you have something to report.
Right, yeah.
Essentially, or unless you want to bring it back and have another discussion. Because by that, so where we're at now is that we we can provide, um, we can provide what we listed in the staff report if someone else is gonna take it on. Um, and then if, then we need to decide whether we're gonna do that for the farmer's market. So.
I think it's worth one more discussion, even uh, with limited information, so we can just flesh out. I think it's kind of coming to the point where uh, in August, right, you guys say it takes uh, a year roughly to plan for EV fair, so um, I think we should still have the discussion August and try to come with some conclusion or or at least direction we'd like to go in at that point.
I think my take on all this, um, that we should wait to hear what, whether the EV fair can be done without help from the city or the minimum, real minimum, help from the city. I mean, that's that's the key, I think. I I personally strongly believe that we still need to do it as as it is. And maybe we can expand it a little bit, you know, talk about electrification a little bit wider. Um, and then the farmer's market, I think is a very good idea, and I think it's great, and I think we we can do it, we should do it, but it doesn't have to be extremely, you know, it it doesn't necessarily would require a lot of planning. I see it for specific items that can be discussed at a table at the farmer's market, whether it's what you're doing on June twentieth or plastic in the plastic, uh, the outreach for the plastic uh, ordinance, uh, or maybe some stuff around electrification that we can do, that we can discuss later what can be done. I think there will be a lot of outreach and education to be done. And I think that farmer's market is one would place to start. It's one option. There are many other, many other options and many other things that we should be able to do, but um, so anyway, that's my take. It's just, I think EV fair, if we can do it, we should keep doing it. And the farmer's market, I think we can leverage that for sure for some activities. It doesn't have to be, you know, an event. Can just be at the table, a couple of people, some adults talking about something specific, doing some outreach, basically.
So we we can bring this back for discussion next, next time. Um, and then go from there.
Excellent. Okay. Uh, next up were the discussion items, I guess, the round discussion items. Okay, uh, and the ad hoc committee reports. Um, the first one is dark skies and uh, not not too much to update from the last time, uh, the ordinance is being uh, worked through by Nick and the staff. Uh, theoretically, hopefully we'll have a look at that next uh, by by the August meeting. Um, as I mentioned, as you heard, we are going to man the booth uh, at the farmer's market and do some outreach and we will come back and let you know how successful that was. Um, but yeah, if if you do have any ideas, uh, please send them to Tanya and she can forward them to me, like what we should have at that booth, because I didn't even think about having lighting examples. That's kind of obvious. Uh, so no matter how obvious your ideas are, please send them to Tanya and that'll help us. It is a very last minute uh, effort, but I think it'll it'll be fun. Um, what else did we have on? Oh, um, budgetary items, we had, and and maybe it'll tell us in August, but we had requested a uh, consultant for to review our dark sky ordinance and the, you know, bird safety ordinance. Um, I forget what the numbers were, but it wasn't a huge amount. Um.
I think it's around fifteen thousand.
Total, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that's.
Fifteen, one, five thousand.
To review the audience. To review each one, yeah. So total, but I think it'll come in something less than that. Um, but that was the ballpark. Um.
And that's coming out of which budget?
So I I don't know if uh, we have an answer on that, if you want to hold, but that was one question Xiaoping and I had with her.
So, um, I'm, I've been reviewing um, back and forth the Brisbane one, which is the consultant that they used as well. Um, with modification of, because they're obviously immediately adjacent to the Bay Conservancy area, which is obviously has different kind of sets of rules. Um, I'm kind of largely in agreement and understanding what they were doing. So, um, when I go to try and craft it into our code to give you guys a draft, unless you guys substantially want to deviate from it, I don't really think it's necessary for us to essentially resend something back to the person that kind of approved it. You kind of did create something in a model kind of format within the provisions for the conservancy, which is, again, we don't have to worry about that at all. Um, because they have specific migratory birds that were, I mean, that's very detailed in their ordinance. Um, so if I can kind of discern, um, or potentially even reach out to their staff um, to understand exactly what was required in the conservancy um, and extract it out, then we shouldn't really need to kind of rely back on the same technical advice he's already given in other jurisdictions.
Yeah, I I kind of view is that's kind of your call, uh, uh, because we we did uh, uh, almost everything, a lot of things are modeled off of Brisbane in general, uh, because it was cutting edge stuff. Um, so uh, that's kind of your call, which you're comfortable with. And uh, you know, bird safety and glass is slightly different than dark sky. Um, uh, one of the things I'd be conservative, I think, I don't know exactly what materials people can use and we will have to come up a list of that, that I'm not capable of. So that might, we can probably eventually find it through neighboring cities or consultants, but that might be helpful to have a consultant to come up with that list of items.
I agree.
Yeah. Uh, but again, that's kind of your call, uh, Doug, because that's beyond our expertise. Okay. Um, and then the only other thing on that on that front is we are going to start outreach, starting with the farmer's market and then probably some uh, presentations.
You gonna have a question, Alex? You gonna, I know.
I don't, I think we've been cautioned not to do uh, surveys.
You just like informal questions.
But yeah, you just can't do like structured, you know, like having them go to like a survey monkey type of a deal.
Yeah.
But you just have like, you know, the, you know, hey, what like, I mean, the generic or the big one is, you know, wh- what prevents you from adopting an EV or something? Oh, well, I can't afford the, I mean, what we probably hear from some people is I can't afford the um, the panel upgrade right now. Um, or I don't have reliance on the grid, um, you know, fundamentally, if that if that was your question. But it gave me kind of a a big overarching one, but if you're trying to really formulate data from it, then yeah, we we don't want surveys like that. Uh, more so to give you kind of more of like the whole estate bigger picture kind of, okay, what what maybe we might want to go forward with?
Are you talking about something that can be trans, transmitted online or are you just talking like verbal sort of survey?
So yeah, like when you're at like the farmer's market, for example, if you kind of are, you know, writing down and kind of getting back some of the bigger picture kind of understandings and stuff uh, from the conversations and when people are talking about the booths, that's really kind of what is so acceptable.
Oh. I haven't been to Marcus, the farmer's market. Is there a table already for Environmental Commission there?
There's cities, and so there will, yeah, there'll be a table and um, yeah. A table can be that.
There's always got to be one. I mean, what is.
What is the?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, so that is dark skies. Any questions or suggestions? Next one, um, single-use plastics.
Sure. Uh, Tanya's present for everything I'm gonna say, but uh, we we had two informational sessions, I think it was last Monday, not not this Monday, but the one before it, maybe it's. Okay, several weeks ago.
June third.
June third. Um, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Uh, they were attended by uh, two different representatives of Pete's. Uh, and that's basically uh, all sort of. So uh, we did have another uh, restaurant present for the afternoon meeting, and so we had a very good open conversation with Ben and Pete's. Uh, but uh, certainly not.
Yeah, my my expectation of uh, who we who would see. So uh, I'm sort of hoping that there is some data maybe on how many uh, UD visitors have been to the resources, because we gave them the website when the letter, the letter that went out. When the letter, the letter that went out, so. They have all the information, it's just a matter of have they actually been. Actually, I don't know, that's why they didn't show up or otherwise, but.
And also a recording that we did of the sessions that we can also see how many. People are visiting that, but. It certainly feels like more outreach is needed.
And so we, you you sent letters to.
Yeah, we, we sent emails.
Oh, email.
Yeah, contact, which we can like track who opens them and. And most of them opened it and looked at it, so.
Yeah, that attendance is a little surprising. And you get, have you received any feedback on the of the emails? Nothing. So nobody is angry about it, so I guess that's good.
Yes, and we're going to be doing more outreach, like business to business outreach. Right, just like, I don't know if you're familiar with what we did with SB thirteen eighty-three, but we're going to be doing door-to-door outreach. Providing the materials and trying to talk to businesses in person. That's what we'd be doing next.
Who's doing the door-to-door? If somebody's actually going to.
Yes, we're going to have interns who are going to do that.
And that's the thing, I mean, what what is is going to happen, like like over the summer or do you have?
Yeah, this is going to start pretty soon, this is next week or so.
And then based on that feedback, you kind of brought the ordinance. Could be another step.
If we get feedback, yeah. Yep, the next step.
No feedback is good, right? No feedback is good.
Yeah, so the next step would be to exhaust, you know, our outreach efforts and then. Yes, finalize the ordinance, we basically have, you know, the model ordinance from San Mateo County. And just seeing like if, you know, any of the businesses. You know, make a sneak otherwise about certain things and then moving forward with what we've proposed to commit like. So actually, yeah, we would come back to the commission and, you know, say like what we what we proposed back in, I don't remember when this was, but. Maybe it was March, with. You know, we're moving forward with all those things, summarize it basically and then, yeah. Write the ordinance and then go to council.
I see. You shut up to the chamber.
I think actually this, I think the mission trails being here, I don't think even just hearing what they recently said is, you know. A lot of the the vendors and the people that are actually producing. The goods are also going to be kind of held accountable for disposal of the waste, so to speak. It's going to get more and more restrictive essentially versus for them future years. I mean, I can say from personal experience. Sorry, all my life, you know, as a restaurant business owner, I can tell you like working directly with the vendors, like. The actual sales vendors from some of the suppliers really. Are starting and have been pushing for the last few years kind of near of like the. Yeah, it was the compostable plastic thing, which, you know, now we kind of realize is not necessarily the solution like they thought it was going to be. But, you know, more and more, you're starting to see these kind of like fiberware, kind of these. These different things that aren't necessarily the stereotypical plastic container that we've seen for a good number of years now, post. Thirefoam, believe it or not, that's been several years, so I think I think there is already a really big shift in the restaurant industry kind of. On the back end that, like, that's probably one of the reasons why we're not going to have as much potential kind of comments or opposition, because. Honestly, a lot of them are kind of just getting pushed this anyways, honestly, from their sales reps. And that's kind of just, it's kind of the one-stop shop with some of the, well, if you ever seen like Cisco products, for example. Like that food vendor, they also do the 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 paperware or the to-go type products and. Kind of like, oh, yep, this is our lookbook, which type of product do you need, and it's like, these are two options and. You know, they kind of just it's the one-stop shop, so. I wouldn't be surprised if that's why we didn't hear from some of them, but I think we'll obviously get some more response when we have some interns that go and. Ask various specific questions.
And I think already some restaurants have shifted towards. Not using plastics in Los Santos, I mean, I don't think it's, I mean, insignificant number, actually, maybe not all of it, but part of it.
One regal to different, I mean, it still gives a lot of plastic chef shoes, so.
Yeah.
And because no. Okay, me this.
Some do, some do, some, some.
You know, and then it's funny though, is then you go next door to Armored Little Willys, which kind of you just think like, all right, a barbecue shop, like they're going to, you know. Need to get whatever they can to make sure that like barbecue sauce has been filling everywhere and it's. Believe it or not, a lot of it is pretty much fiberware or it's the foil, so it's actually probably one of the most idealistic ones without even adding an ordinance in effect. I think the only thing is, you know, their little butter things sometimes are, it's like a fifty-fifty, because we sometimes get takeout, you know, for lunch and stuff, so. It's kind of funny, but you know, it's.
Sure, a question about that, because it's been bugging me, every time I go to the farmer's market, it bothers me because. You get your fruits and you get the plastic bag.
Others have changed that, right?
Yeah, so I mean, the question is, I mean, I had mentioned that before, but I think. If we can also do that, that would be fantastic, because it's just waiting.
Yeah, but they are not, they are not.
I don't know, that's my question.
Registered with the city, they know they're not on.
But they are.
Oh, wait, and. Farmer's market, like, like Cal alto doesn't let. Doesn't allow.
Those are the separate ordinance that would most likely fall under the plastic bag ordinance, which we'll be also updating. When we take this to council, so.
So you're going to take that to the the, that update is going to go to council at the same time? Okay, because I, okay, that's fine, that's as long as it's covered somewhere, yes.
The nice thing about the market is that like our farmer's market is. I don't even can't remember what the group is called, but there's there's an organizer of that group. That has all of their contacts and obviously probably would, almost like a law of our chamber would probably speak on most of their behalf, so. What is or is not acceptable for them on their basis or what they need in order to kind of be the offset or whatever it may really have to be. So we could easily get Laba's contact for whoever the gentleman is.
Okay. Great. Next item is building electrification.
Presentation, I'm just.
Want to talk?
You want me? You, I assumed you were doing it since you did the presentation, but.
All right, so. We've met quite a bit, actually, the three of us, Laura, Rashina and I, and we've met with some potential. Companies that we could partner with for to accelerate building and electrification. This is kind of a, you know. State of the subcommittee kind of presentation, this is where we are, and I think. We are at a stage where we want your feedback. And, you know, understand what you guys think about all this and where we should, what we should be focusing on in the in the. As we keep going on this. So. First, we talk about a little bit about where we are in Los Santos in terms of electrification. Talk about potential strategies, potential partners, some legislative options, which I think we have to talk about. And then we don't have any discussion from the guys to. At this point, you know, basically tell us what you think and what we should be focusing on, so. Next slide, if you. So the term data, you you know, Tanya has presented two thousand twenty-four data, at least the first four months, and then two thousand twenty-three data, we looked at two thousand twenty-two data. To try to find a trend and rapidly this is what it's setting out, so we have three times as many gas power water heaters. Being installed compared to heat pumps, so one. One heat pump of three gas water heaters right now. But keep in mind also that you don't necessarily need a permit to replace a gas water heater, so it's probably actually. More than that, it's more like one to four, maybe one to five, we don't know for sure, but it's definitely one, two, three minimum. So clearly, there is a, there is a huge gap there, and I think we can do something, we could potentially do something about it. In terms of gas furnaces and heat pumps, it's about. The same number of gas furnaces versus heat pumps being installed, and we can rely on the permit data, because you need, and here, at least, you need a. A permit to be able to do that. The only thing is that there are still some old AC units that are being replaced by AC units, which are not heat pumps, so. So in terms, you know. It, it, you know, we. We totally would want all of this to be heat pumps, but then we can. Do a little bit more to accelerate that process. In terms of PV systems and energy storage systems, batteries. Actually, in Los Santos, residents have installed a lot of PV system, a lot of. And an increasing number of energy storage system, we're not at the same level yet, but I think. You know, if we had to focus on something in particular, I would say that let's not, potentially let's not focus on PV system and energy storage, maybe energy, energy storage, but maybe not PV systems. Anyway, that's what the permit data tells us, so water heater is a big issue. I think we could do better with regards to heating and cooling. You know, actually, we could do something around energy storage systems, but.
Excellent, one question about the trends, when you say three times as many gas power, is that? Still the same in two thousand twenty-four as?
Yeah, it's.
It actually doesn't change that, because if you look at the various.
I mean, you can see a minor difference, but you can't say it's significant, you see, I wouldn't say it's. And we don't have complete two thousand twenty-four data, so we only have four months until it's out to.
Is the caneless? Gas power, I think so, it is, huh? You know, people like this kind of. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's instant, instant heaters as well as the the tanks, right, so it's it's combined, the two are combined in that, what we're showing you. Right, so. It's still gas, whatever, whatever, whatever you use, it's gas that you're using to. Heat your water, it's it's including as a gas water heater, whether it's a tankless or a tank. Water heater. Next one, Tanya. All right, so, based on that, I think, you know, there are definitely things we can do, but. One is, you know, we, if we want to accelerate the electrification, we probably would need to partner with an outside organization. That would help us actually get information out and also make it easier for the residents to actually switch to a heat pump, for example. Definitely increasing outreach and education, I think. Although, based on the term of data, it looks like Los Santos are still, are already doing a lot in terms of electrifying the house, I think there is a lot more that can be done. And I think there is some. Information gathering, sharing, that information sharing that we can do. Incentivizing electrification with building exception, we'll talk about that, but I think the other thing that we can look at as a city is, can we incentivize electrification in general? There are ways and there are potentially ways to do it without costing the city a lot of money. And that's what we'll be talking about a little bit later. And then I think one that we can't overlook is, you know, whether we want to take a look at reach for it again. And I think that's one thing that as a as a commission, we should start thinking about and decide what we want to recommend. Next one. All right, so. In terms of specifically accelerating building electrification, making it easier for Los Santos to go to. Electric appliances and specifically heat pumps, we have talked to two different organizations, one of them you know already for sure, because they came to make a presentation at this. At a commission meeting, which is block power, another one, a new one, Ensemble, actually, Tanya, you can, you can click on each of, there should be a link just to give you the. It should take you to the the front page of each organization. It works.
You have to stop sharing this and then.
That's okay, you don't have to do that, yeah, in the justice. Anyway, so Ensemble is a new San Francisco-based organization, they really started at the beginning of this year, so it's a very new, fresh organization. It's, what they do is, right now, they're focusing on heat pump installation for what, heat pump water heaters. That's the only thing they're doing right now, they're not doing HVAC, they're not doing that kind of stuff, but that, they're planning to add that in Q three or Q four. Whether they will do it or not, it's not clear at this time, but. They also. One thing that's interesting about them is that it's app-based. It was started by ex-Google employees, so everything is through an app. Well, not everything, actually, the beginning is through an app, and after you have an exchange of emails and potentially phone conversation with them. But one thing which is very interesting for people that want to install heat pumps, that they take into account all incentives. And they don't, they discount that from the total cost of the installation. So what you're paying is a net cost, you don't have to wait three to six months to get your incentives back. To pay back some of the cost you were, so in terms of how much cash out and the. We'll talk more about Ensemble a little bit later, but then the other one is block power, it's obviously a large organization, they are sixty-plus staff members, they've been around for several years. They've partnered with several several cities, including San Jose, Mountain View and Menlo Park around us. The partnership with San Jose and Mountain View and newer, the one with Menlo Park is about two or three years old, and they do different things for the city, so which. Contract or partnership is different depending on the needs of the city and the money the city has available. So. What they, so it's based on their website again, they usually customize their website for city partners, so if you're Los Santos, if you do a partnership with them. They're going to have a Los Santos page where people, residents, they're going to have, you're able to go on there and get an update. Of the state of their building in terms of what the scope of work that could be done to electrify the building, and from there. They, you know, the block power will basically help them to get there, depending on what they're willing to do. Next slide. So Ensemble, I mentioned the app focus, I mentioned, so I I went through the process, I don't know if Laura and Rashina did, but I went through the process, so I said, look, we need to test how it works. So I tested with them using my water heater, because that's what they do right now. And the way it works, you start with the app, you send, you you enter information on the app, you download the app, you enter information on the app. Then that's being sent to Ensemble in San Francisco, and then they either call you, set up. Set up a conference call or ask you to send more information through an email. And usually what they're asking you to send is pictures. Where your gas water heater is and some videos. They take that and that information, they also ask you to send a picture of the serial number of your water heater to understand what it is, the age of the water heater and so on. And then based on that, they get back to you with an estimate of what it would take, whether it's durable to install, what type of. Heat pump water heater you would need to be installed to replace your gas water heater. And the costs, they give you, usually they look at, for me, at least, they gave me estimates for two contractors. And then one was cheaper, the other one was more expensive, they should simply go with the cheaper one, the contractors that they work with, obviously. And then they gave me a net cost, so the cost of replacing my gas water heater with a heat pump. Minus all the incentives that I would have access to. They take care of all the, basically, they pay, they give you the money, in some ways, they advance you the money. For the incentive, and the incentives eventually will get back to them, right? So you pay a net cost, which is kind of interesting, because you don't have to worry about incentives, you just pay the net cost of the installation. Which can vary depending on the incentive you have access to. The, one of the downs, a couple of downsides to that, one is that you need to download, you have to get started. A lot of it is taking videos, uploading videos onto an email and sending the email. So for some people, it might be of a challenge, so we would have to set up some.
Place for people to have, like, all the residence funds and all that.
Not as savvy with apps, downloading the app, sending information for the app. And then, you know, it's only the beginning for Ensemble, so the app will be, the idea of what they want to do is that everything is done through the app eventually, right now, that's not the case. But that's going to be the case potentially. But that's one downside, the second downside is that, as I mentioned, they only do gas water heaters replacement right now. They're planning to do it back later on, but we don't know when it's going to happen. And then the last one, I thought it was a pretty slow process, actually, so it took them about. Two to three weeks to get back to me with an estimate and everything. Which I thought would be much faster, so anyway, so that's that's Ensemble. There's another benefit if we. There's another benefit, uh, if we were to partner with them and it would be. Wouldn't be a contract or something, would be a partnership where we would work with them to do some outreach, to get them to know. For, for residents to know that they are available, it's some service that's available to them, uh, to be able to change, to electrify their building. Um, so um, you know, that's, but, but that partnership would mean, uh, there is, it doesn't cost the city anything. Right? So the city puts, puts its name behind Ensemble and say, and tell Los Santos residents, hey, you can use Ensemble to electrify your building. And we do outreach and all that and so on, but it doesn't cost us anything except the outreach piece, right? So we probably would have to spend some money on the outreach.
To clarify, it's like a partnership, there's no contract with the city. So it's a very informal arrangement. And we would get as much out of it, I think, as we, you know, um, put into promoting it. But they also do outreach to, to the residents.
Yeah, so it, I mean, I think it, I don't know exactly, and I, I don't think we know exactly what. It would be some kind of, it wouldn't be a contract whereby we spend that, we give them money to do something. Uh, maybe there is something, there is a piece of that which would be about the marketing, the promotion, the outreach. But it's unclear. Right now, we haven't gone beyond that stage, right? So that's just to give you an idea. It's not like the city would have to pay them to do, to, to give the service, right? So we may have to invest some money to do the promotion of that service.
And then is the city allowed to promote um, third party?
I was gonna wait till, I have a couple of points to talk about this, so I can wait till the end of the, yeah.
Next one, how do they make money?
They work.
I don't think, I didn't, I said, I don't think they make money right now.
Yeah.
Well, I will be.
I, I think, I think they have something.
They found it, it's just like, it's the kind of like Block Power is the same, right? This, you can't, I don't think they're making money right now, but they are probably funding, if I don't think.
No, no, I'm sure they're being funded, but like, oh, for long term, are they gonna take a cut of it? They must be taking a cut from the contractors, because the rebate is a rebate, unless they're taking a cut of the rebate.
No, they're not taking a cut of the rebates. Um, yeah. Okay, they might take a cut of the contractors, yeah, thank you, but I probably.
They probably paid a bill eventually.
Eventually, yeah, right now, they, right now, it's, you know, started.
You know, just like at the long term.
By, by and saying, and then, yeah, it's long term. And, and that's one question about that one, these guys, is that they're fairly good. So you take the risk by working with a very early startup, if we, we decide to do that. But the risk is minimized because there is no money involved from Ensemble.
But any one of us could go, can go do it right now.
Yeah.
Did you replace her?
No, no, I was doing, I was doing a test, yeah, yeah, just, no, not for fun, I should be doing a test, yeah.
How, how, what's the advantage working with them versus you work with S V C E? You get all this and they also have referral contractors that will be.
If you work with S V C E, you're gonna have to find your paperwork for the incentives. You're gonna have to pay the full cost to the, to the contractor and then hope that you're gonna get your money back from the incentives of the rebates and the discounts. They don't, they do everything for you. The only thing you have to do is to take pictures, video, upload that, spend an hour on the phone with the guy from Ensemble and then you get something. And then if you say yes, they take care of everything. It's very simple. That's the whole benefit of working with these people is that, you know, if you start, I mean, if you don't know. First of all, you're gonna miss some, some incentives and rebates and discounts guaranteed unless you really know what you're doing. Uh, and then it's gonna take you forever to find the contractors, to, to get the right info, to, to find your paperwork, to hope that you get your money back. I mean, it's just not.
To figure out what, what water heater you want, where you're gonna put it all that stuff, yeah.
It's, it makes things a lot easier to work with someone, yeah.
So since we already, already talking about, I'm just gonna, we can't promote one company. We can go into contract for services, um, where we would stop to follow, uh, purchasing requirements for that. Um, and then to decide if we can go into contract with them, but we can't promote just one company.
That's fine, I mean.
So that, we could create like a, like basically how we have the incentives looks on the website, we could create a list of like. Similar, sim, but they're similar companies. And say like, here's a list, just like for your reference, but we can't, and it can't be one person.
Yeah, I mean, maybe the solution is to do a contract, it's just the contract doesn't have a, the city, it doesn't cost the city anything, except writing a contract. If we have to do a contract, we can do a contract, just one thing.
Yeah, and the, and for that, we would have to, um, if there's other services like this, we would have to talk to them and. And interview them and stuff, so there's a whole process for that. Um, and then, yes, I have a similar question with the, so the S V C E has the Go Electric Advisor now, which I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with. They can just call and basically ask, like, I have this water heater, basically, essentially what they're doing here and say that. And say, and they'll help you with that, but that's correct, they're not gonna fill out the, the forms for you and. Um, however, do you know if these incentives that they're gonna be applying for, do they give their own incentives?
No, no, it's only the incentives that's available, that are available to everyone. It's S V C E, B R N.
S V C E, for example. Do, do you know if they, I have to double check, but I was just looking at like HVAC. I think they do require, um, for HVAC, they do require them to, um, bow, get a permit. To, to get the, um, rebate.
Yeah, they would get a permit. I mean, they, they would, they would get a permit for your water heater, your hitpump. Yeah, 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 absolutely. The contractor does that.
The Ensemble does that.
It's the contractor they hire. The contractor hires and asks for coming, not Ensemble, it's the contractor, but the contractor is required to pay, to uh, to get a permit.
Okay. And then something else I noticed is that a lot of people, when they're, would the target audience be existing water heaters?
It just says replace your water heater, I just downloaded the app.
I guess for, from us, yeah, admission with that, because a lot of people are already getting, a lot of people when they're doing new builds or, you know. Um, doing large, um, alterations.
Except they're, they're having larger, who's already doing and stuff for them. Yeah, so the, the target of this would be, would be a replacement water heater.
Based on the research that Bruno did following through that, that was the easiest flowing, low tangy proof. Um, that we could target the water heaters.
And then, you know, again, eventually, and hopefully, they include HVACs in there. But right now, it's not available, it's come. Next one. The next one is Block Power. Um, I think pretty much all of you have seen the present, I mean, they came, present. We had further discussion with them as a subcommittee, invited to come back a couple times. Um, and then learn about what they're doing with San Jose, what they're doing with Mountain View. So they kind of different programs and the money involved is different. And I don't know how much Los Santos will be able to, to put down for that kind of program, but um. You know, one of, one of the things that, um, you know, we need to be clear about Block Power is that. Contrary to Ensemble, the city would have to sign a contract, put money down on a yearly basis to be able to, you know, work with. I, it's, it's not something, their service is not free right, right now, so, uh, like, uh. That's what Mountain View is doing, that's what San Jose is doing. Um. The, the program that you can design with Block Power can be really tailored to your needs and what you want to achieve, right? So you can be very focused or you can go very wide. You can be mostly outreach, or you can be a concierge type service where they take care of everything, right? So that's.
Similar, similar to Ensemble, the concierge.
Yeah, except for them, yeah, exactly. Yeah, rebate, they all have from the rebates, um.
But to do that is a lot more expensive.
Yeah.
With what therapy, to have a full service contract with them is, is really expensive.
From the city or from the consumer?
Their initial proposal, that's with like one twenty K share, right?
Seventy five.
What about?
Yeah, seventy five, that's kind of. The last one, the centers.
Really? I think it started at one twenty, yeah.
No, seventy five each.
Isn't it a big call for power that they do a lot of the data, like, they get a lot of the data and that they target?
Yeah, so that's block maps, that's beyond maps, yeah.
Probably would be included on any stuff that people are gonna do.
Well, I mean, I, I think it's a real question whether we need to include block maps or not for us, because. It's not like when you're, you, we are a huge city, right? So block maps is really useful when you have very big cities. I'm not sure it would be a huge benefit for us, but um. You know, we, we can, we can, I mean, just talking to them, there are ways we can target people, right? Without necessarily spending a lot of money on block maps and so on. So it could be a little bit more targeted, Ensemble would have target, it's just, I mean, the service is available, if you want to use it, you use it. Block Power, you can do a little bit more targeting, yeah.
So the other thing with Block Power is that they prefer to work with multi-family homes. Uh, and do blocks, you know, buildings at a time, so the advantage of work, so. The advantage of working with single family home, you know, and owners is, is a little bit less than what they offer. So my one question would be, do we know how many multi-family. Uh, units we have that are maybe more than twenty years old, like around downtown, there's, is there a way to find out? Um, the inventory of multi-family units and by, you know, year built kind of thing?
Yes, you don't have that in the top.
So that'd be helpful to know and if it makes sense to even engage them on that, if that may be something.
Yeah, because obviously it's, you know, we, we're not in the, at, at a stage where we're having discussions to really be specific of what we would want them to do. Because we haven't had that discussion at the commission anyway. Um, but I think we can include multifamily homes, we can just do multifamily homes, we can just do single res, single homes, we can do a combination of both. We can do whatever we want, we can really tailor the program to go up to specific targets.
Who would like Ensemble, N G U's, Montage World?
Well, that's the challenge, because um, more, less likely, because if there is an owner of the multi-family building, right? So it's not like you go and replace one water heater in one apartment in the building unless you own that apartment. But if you're renting, it becomes a completely type of issue.
Do you do jacking outreach to those owners though?
These guys, yes.
Ensemble?
Yeah, Ensemble, yeah. I mean, we would, we would do outreach, we would do outreach, but to the whole pool of Los Santos residents, right?
Well, we could do targeted outreach to the owners of the.
Oh, you mean for that? Well, yeah, we could, I guess, but I, it, it's not, I mean, we can talk to Ensemble about multifamily homes. We haven't really talked to them about that. Uh, I'm not sure how they would deal with that. Because it's a, you know, it's a, it's a single appliance based system, right? You go on the, one, one unit at a time, so it's probably not the right solution for multifamily. Block Power would be the solution.
Yeah, I would imagine the reason why they probably stray away from it is, um. With building, um, depending on how the actual building was constructed. And how essentially the, the guts of the building are kind of, um. Kind of subdivided, so to speak, even though it's all attached usually. Um, is how it was all kind of wired and configured, like, one of the really big things that California changed, I wanna say it was like four years ago. Is that, um, and I think the buy window is like, in the next two or three years. Is, um, like for water meters, even if it was built in the nineteen eighties, and I only know this because the, the place I owned in, um, Southern California. They did this, um, they required it of us, um, because we needed to do a major water, um, main, um, improvement to repair it. We then had to do, um, sub-meters, because originally it was tied all to our master HOA. And so it's kind of the same thing as like the electrical. A lot of times, it's only just the sub-panel, which is very easy to just switch out. It's really kind of tie it back to the main, um, and then the ownership component. And so I bet you that's probably why they stray away from it and it's not what they're immediately gonna grapple to, because it's a lot easier for the single family ones.
I mean, I think to your point, we need to figure out it, how much of an issue is this for us.
Right, yeah.
How many units do we have?
It would be interesting to know, I mean, specifically, I mean, it's can be a apartment or, and then it can be rented or sorts of different, different dynamics. Depending on what type of unit, if you own the building, actually. Anyway, just to finish, they are not, spent too much time on this thing, but um. Block Power, with these subcontractors that they use for the work they're doing, they also have a construction team. That comes out on a regular basis to check on the contractors that they're using. So they have a way of reviewing the work of the contractors on site and making sure that they follow specific policies. Which is kind of nice, it's, it's, it's a, something, uh, that could, we could potentially benefit from indirectly. Next one. Alright, so moving on to educational outreach, um. So I, you know, some of the things we talked about, and we would like the city to consider. It's definitely what you're doing with the sustainability page, Tanya, and, and the whole team there. Uh, we're very supportive of that. I think, uh, there are things that we can improve. We could potentially also, um, have links to part the organization, the organization that would provide additional information to residents, thinking about S V C E, B R N and so on. Is figuring out the right link. I think also being able to access that susten, sustainability page more directly from the Los Santos website would be also extremely useful. I, I think we, you know, without saying, you know, preempting any discussions, but one way, you know, continuing the EV fair or the electrification fair. And have electrification, building electrification booth at the fair or at the farmer's market, I think definitely would. Would help us continue the education and the outreach. Um, um, now, the other thing we could do also. In terms of outreach, is create a series of lectures, town halls, meetings on the benefits of electrification. And we can invite, uh, experts on different types of electrification, whether it's people concerned, or people, contractors that are installing. HVAC, uh, uh, hitpumps and so on, I mean, there are ways we can partner with, uh, some people that can, uh. That can help us educate the residents. S V C E would be another one, and B R N, and Actera, and maybe. Um. Obviously, advertising, putting some articles in the town crier, informing people of what we're doing in the city, what services are available to them. When to find information and so on, do that on a regular basis, potentially, maybe two, three times a year. Or determine are they too useful or more. Um, um, the other thing we talked about is potentially providing some electrification or hitpump information during the building permit application process. So it's at the planning stage. Um, and that's something that we could explore, uh, when people start sending some, you know, draft. Permit or talk about the scope of work and planning and so on, then we could provide, potentially provide them with that kind of information, so they can integrate that in their thinking. And also potentially partner with all the local nonprofit organizations and city groups in terms of doing some outreach education and so on. Next one. So we talked about how can we incent, incentivize people to electrify their building, their house. Um, we can give them money, some cities do that, you know, if you put a hitpump water heater, you'll get five hundred dollars from the city. And that's something we could do. If, I love, I don't think we're cleaning up the table, but we thought about things that wouldn't cost the city anything, right? So, you know, some of these incentives can be done at the planning stage and some example of incentives that we talked about. Uh, as the three others, as a subcommittee, is increasing the lot coverage for homes that could be hundred percent electric. So in other words, right now, we have a limitation on the, the, the lot coverage and we can increase that by a percentage point. If you go all electric, we'll give you a little bit more to build your house, for example. Uh, we can do, um, we can have setbacks, exceptions as well. So if you install a hitpump, um, hitpump HVAC, maybe we modify the setbacks, so you can install your, your fan outside. Where you want it, whether. where you want it rather than putting in the place you obviously said you want it. Uh we know the setbacks have been fixed by that, because the setbacks, maybe in some cases, maybe there is not a fight to put that that thing in there and maybe we can make an exception. That would be another incentive potentially.
Yeah, I think we were also talking about this in terms of just overall building.
Yeah.
Back inception if you're constructing or significantly remodeling to hundred percent electric. This would not be more just replacing your that you're doing.
If you're doing all electrification, we can make it easier for you.
So in other words, just to understand, in other words, if you're doing all electric, you can build a little closer to your neighbor?
Yeah, we can, we can be very specific about noise and all that stuff, we can, but that's the idea.
Builders get that, right, for putting in um low-income housing, they get some incentive in the city to do that, so that could be one way to nudge um single-family to do that.
Height increase, another potential incentive for people doing whole, whole building electrification. I mean, question is, can we do some permit streamlining? Can we go faster? Can we move them at the top of the pile? You know, when people are doing that kind of stuff, to accelerate the process? These are things that we thought about that could be potentially done by the city without costing the city anything. But just to give you an example, we've, we've listed one, Sunnyvale, um using lot coverage as incentive for all ele- all electric.
What's the delta roughly, the payout?
Five percent.
Five percent?
Yeah, that's what Sunnyvale is doing right now. That's an example of one city. We haven't looked at all the cities, but that could be doing that, but just we wanted to give you a good one example to show you that it's, you know, something that's being done by by our cities. Next one? All right, rich codes. Um I I I I think we need to talk about the eleven in the room, right? Which is the rich code. I mean, we can't talk about building electrification, we are, we're not talking about that. We know that because of the nine district ruling, code ruling, we can't really do anything right now and what we were planning to do in two thousand twenty-three is not being done. Uh but at the same time, uh the Bay Area Quality Management District is still planning to enforce regulations, nine four, which is about gas-fired policies, and nine six, which is about gas-fired boilers and water heaters, which means that they're gonna um regulate based on emissions, uh specifically based on uh nitrous oxide. Uh and that, and they still plan, I told to them, so they're still moving forward full steam ahead with this thing. Uh and they still plan to ban gas water heaters by two thousand, after two thousand twenty-seven, gas policies after two thousand twenty-nine, and large gas policies after two thousand thirty-one, these large gas policies, basically when you have a boiler for one single multifamily home. They're talking about a history of ones, not, not single family ones. Um next one? So things are happening in terms of rich codes. There are new rich codes that could use, uh we could, we could develop new rich codes. There are potentially four different ways of doing it. Uh one way is an emission-based ordinance, which is uh similar to uh the one that was done in Los Santos Hills, which is is based on emissions, not sign, or the one in New York City, which is based on green gas, greenhouse gas emissions. So we could, we could look at doing potentially an emissions-type rich code. Um and then, but there are two other ones that are very similar, which has, which are based on efficiency or energy performance. Um so one is called the one margin, the other one is the flex path uh type of uh uh performance, and they're kind of the same, they're a little bit different in the way it's applied. Uh I don't think we want necessarily to go in detail about that right now. I don't think we're prepared to talk about those details. But these are, these are our options. The 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 next two, obviously, the one margin performance standard and the uh flex path um uh compliance uh com- or compliance path rich code. These are less interesting in the sense that you don't, uh you would still have the use of some gas equipment, gas appliances, right? So it's, it helps you a little bit in terms of reducing your greenhouse gas emissions. It's actually a little bit about being cleaner, it helps you a little bit to electrify a little bit more your buildings, but it doesn't go all the way uh in electrifying buildings. Um another, another one, um which is not a rich code, but is, would be to, the fourth one would be to uh have new building performance standards. Uh that's a lot. It's a, it's a, it's complex, it would take a lot of staff time to be able to do that. But that's another option, uh if we want to regulate from a legislative standpoint, if we want to move faster in terms of electrification, these are the four options. Three rich codes, two different kinds of rich codes. Um or, you know, have new building performance standards for the city of Los Santos, which would take longer and obviously yeah, it's a lot more time for us to do that. Anyway, so you know, that's something also that I thought we would need to talk about, not just about partnering outreach and all that stuff, but if we really want to ac- accelerate the electrification, I think we need to look at all the options and potentially do everything, but we may not be able to do everything uh for various reasons. Next one? So in terms of other things we could do beyond rich codes, I mean, regarding the rich code, we can just say, you know, we're not going to do anything, we're gonna wait and see what the New California building code will be in two thousand twenty-five and we'll do something based on that. Um you know, and the other option, I mean, another thing that I think we had, we we talked about it and we thought we had to really have that discussion, is to accelerate building electrification, understanding we don't have any money. We have only fifty thousand dollars this year in the budget for all sustainability, basically, not much. You know, one thing we could do, we could say, okay, you can install gas water heaters, you can install gas policies, but it's, there will be an environmental fee charge for that, like you have a permit fee charge for it. And that money could go towards, you know, pushing for building electrification, whether it's incentivizing the installation of heat pumps, whether it's doing more outreach, whether it's paying for block power to help us with that, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that's something that I think the commission should have a say on on it, uh you know, discuss. Next one, I think it's, that's the last one, I think. Yeah, so there you are.
That was quite good, yeah. That's a lot of information in there.
Uh, you know, yeah, we don't have to go to the
Um so any questions? Um I guess I have a question. It's, it's, so um I'm intrigued by the lot coverage incentive. Um is, is that something this, I mean, can we, I mean, I maybe you don't have any idea, but can we do that? Can we change the lot coverage? And and give electrification a higher lot coverage or reduce the lot coverage for anything that's not fully electrified?
Um not reduce, but um you're saying Sunnyvale's doing that? Um I would just be interested if you could share that with Tanya and she can push it over to me just to see where they're, kind of like how they're, what their mechanism is it for? Um the reason why I say that is um electrification is a function of the building code um inherently and um a lot coverage incentive is a function of zoning. Um I would just be interested to see how they do that, because that's exactly why Berkeley got in trouble, was because they dabbled in zoning for something that is not a zoning provision. Um I mean, it's an interesting way to incentivize it. I mean, that is a that's a valid kind of incentive for some people that will kind of look at it as a very easy trade-off. Um I would, I'd be curious as to how Sunnyvale was applying it or regulatorily weaving it. So, yeah, um I mean, if we can do it, we can do it. Um you know, I would just have to look at the mechanism.
I'm guessing we could do some other ones we mentioned, like height increase and that kind of stuff, so the same kind of mechanism, right?
Uh or which one? Height increase, which?
Height increase.
Oh, height increase, I thought you said height.
No, 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 height increase.
Um uh yeah, we could. That one, I will say, is, that's kind of, I would say, more temperamental in any jurisdiction, even if we're not talking outreach codes, I would just be careful of that. There's also the unintended consequences that we deal with, you know, even having the trees and like if people are um have legal non-conforming um single-story homes next to a brand-new two-story home. Um we had some people have some significant um opposition or concern about their existing solar panels of a single story next door because of the shadow casting over, essentially. So um unintended, unintended consequences of height um can be a double-edged sword.
Or setbacks.
That's also something that could be explored, yeah, just like, just like with the um lot coverage, yeah.
And I really like the idea of uh accelerating electrification permits and letting uh non-electrification permits sit for a while in the penalty box. Um again, I think that could be done. Uh, I think anything can be, uh but yeah, who knows? Uh and then um yeah, I'd really like those, and then charging a fee for, an additional fee for anything non-electric as well, I think is a, another great incentive, great incentive. Again, because when you do that, at least you're bringing the conversation to the table, forcing the conversation to the table on all these different levels, uh which I don't think people automatically have knowledge. You're saying, you know, another thousand bucks uh permit fee if you're not doing electric, that would force them to do some research and make a decision.
Or if they don't care, at least.
Or they don't care, yeah.
Or that we use it for other things, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that is a great.
Would have to be a, you know, something really, really specific that really is, doesn't go anywhere else, but goes towards sustainability efforts in general, I think, or great efforts in general. Or electrification, we can just earmark it as just electrification and just we use it just for any electrification stuff we're doing.
Yeah, so I liked all that stuff. Uh I guess my question is, what, what feedback do you want from us now? What are next steps? So I don't, I could just talk all day about this stuff, but not useful.
Um well, that's useful, uh definitely because, you know, that's something we can work with, Tanya, and Nick, and then see if we can get somewhere with that. These three options that you mentioned. I mean, the, the sticky point is gonna be the environmental fee. I'm sure, you know, that, that too, I guess, I don't know if it has to be an audience, but definitely people at council anyway, but um and I think the exception also probably would have to go to council setbacks and a lot of incre- lot of coverage.
Yeah, the next steps would be bringing this back as an actual agenda item and going forward with re- a recommendation.
Right.
What exactly, there's a lot of things that we talked about here.
There's so many things, like I can't, uh yeah, we won't have time to talk about.
Well, I think other things that are useful is which of these things seem like more interesting, useful for us to quite kind of focus on.
So I can, I can say, can I send an email to Tanya? Uh like, if, or if anybody, I mean, I said, I can't remember everything going through all the slides, but like, because the outreach, I have specific thoughts on.
Are you going to see other slides with the, yeah, because I think plus there are um that is, you know.
I think it would be helpful to know if a partnership with
Yeah.
or block power or, you know, something else. Is something we should do.
We can dig further, that's what, potentially.
I think so, but I am wary that you do all this digging and it turns out we can't do it for any number of legal reasons, like, oh, besides, we don't have seventy-five thousand bucks to sign a contract, or we can't support one of those guys explicitly. Um but maybe it's as simple as we put Ensemble on the website and I don't know of anybody doing a similar thing, so is that? I mean.
I don't think we would, we would be able to put it on the website, that's the problem.
Put it on the website and say, this is an option if you need help.
I mean, if it was a resource like SEC, like Go Electric Advisor, Ensemble, you know, app.
We can have a cc. So it's different.
Yeah, except for that's the, probably one of the most analogous things, because you're saying, well, you can have a list. There's not really that many analogous things, probably SBC is one of the closest.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know the answer, but I would support those. I I I think having one of those, either one, if the city, if we can convince the city to do it, I would think that would be helpful. Um, yeah, for sure.
I mean, we can keep digging on those, uh no doubt. I, I, I don't know if, but my fellow committee members, subcommittee members agree with that, but I think one way or another, we're gonna have to do something with an organization that's going to make it easy for people to electrify, because right now it's not. And I think, you know, when you do the whole building, you know, that's your choice and you have a contractor takes care of everything and potentially takes care of the incentives for you. If you're doing a gas water heater, if you're doing just a HVAC system, you know, we see the gap. A lot of people are going to go with whatever contractor X, B, C, or whatever, and then go with what they recommend, right? So without necessarily making the extra effort, unless they're really into it. Um.
And that's something that potentially could be accomplished with um block power, essentially, or someone like them in here, if we were to go, like, let's, let's just say, if I'm this guy, we were able to go under our contracts, yeah, under professional service agreement. Would that be something that the commission, and this is something that we can bring back in August, since you guys can kind of simmer on it, maybe we'll share the slides, I guess, so then you guys can kind of, you know,
Yeah.
have your own independent thought on it and kind of, you know, come back and kind of really go forward, because I could see, you know, the council maybe potentially being supportive of, you know, us pursuing that. But we have to have some kind of more data and maybe more direct kind of um kind of almost like with like an R of Q later request for the qual- quality agents, because it's how are they qualified to do this? Um but then what would be, what would be their potential kind of yield of the benefit back to the city? If we were to get into this contract, obviously, it's gonna cost us. But ultimately, do they think they could project us, say, converting a hundred homes a year to being fully electric in the area?
They would be all the same.
This is how many touchpoints we're committing to, but they're not committing to conversion to how many, you know, installs.
Yeah.
It was more from the promotion side of it versus.
Would they be able to though track then, like the touchpoint, yes, but then if it did end up kind of converting, like, they're not gonna guarantee the conversion, but would, are, would they also be able to track the data of their work that did actually trigger the conversion?
Yeah, they do reporting on a regular basis. They would report to us on a regular basis what they've been doing, what happened.
Yeah, I mean, if that's a, if that's a specific fiscal um kind of cost that the commission would want to potentially try where we're not gonna, you know, do it for, you know, a five-year, multi-year contract, let's say, as a two-year pilot to see, hey, do we get anything from this? And we get the data, you know, even if it's biannually. Um maybe that is something that the, the commission could recommend in, you know, other true, or helpful, say, hey, it's a little bit above the fifty thousand that we have, but we don't really think it's, you know, advantageous for us to give, you know, direct rebates based on all the other rebates that are out there. But this could actually help really leverage all of those other dollars and kind of really get things kind of going. And then we pilot it for a year or two, whatever we kind of have to admit on doing, let's just hypothetically say, block power. Um and then, you know, if it doesn't work, then it's worked.
So if we enter into a contract with block power, it's okay for the city to have that um
Advertise.
Yes. So could that also be done with Ensemble? Like enter into a contract that doesn't have a
Dollar consideration?
Yeah.
So the, the flip side of it is usually that the Ensemble want, will want to take on the indemnification clause in our professional service agreement. And there's no way around it, the city internally never allow it. So that's usually where they're, kind of, they know that there's a potential repercussion, where at least, that's why block power would obviously want to get paid, is because they're, they're kind of carrying general liability to, you know, know if there was a, an issue, essentially.
Okay, we can just more research and talk.
Yeah, we can, Ensemble is talking to other organizations, cities already, so, I mean, they're involved with merit counties one way or another, so we can ask for more details, figure out how it would work for us, I think. Uh so that's things we can do. I mean, in terms of uh your question regarding block power, um they gave us some kind of a draft sketchy proposal based on the discussions we had, and and they were open to doing one year plus two optional years, one by one, being renewed on a yearly basis. So it could be two years plus one, it could be one year plus one plus one, you know, I mean, I think there is some flexibility around now. And then the other thing in terms of money, money-wise, I don't think we would be able And then the other thing in terms of money, money-wise, I don't think we would be able to start that to the beginning of two thousand twenty-five regardless, pretty much, I think. I'm thinking between the contract, the start getting going, the outreach. So, you know, I think the money could be part of this year's pool and then part of next year's pool and where.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was thinking actually, is that it's, I think we're kind of looking at a delta that might not actually be there because of starting. Then restart, because of fiscal cycles. Um, and then that also gives the commission essentially, especially after tonight, you guys are on a birth for a month. From, you know, like August to, you know, like in fall, let's just say, um, kind of really kind of. Working collaboratively at that point with, you know, kind of giving um, staff as much information as they need in order to be able to kind of. Um, help you guys create a proposal that council um, would be willing to accept as a way to um. Truly kind of push the needle for electrification when it comes to the dollar, you know, kind of um. Tie from the city.
And if we could get that multifamily home data, that office could.
That might not even be the one, we might have some of that housing element too, because we have the housing stock um, data.
Um, I was wondering, were you not with block power last year? Didn't they say that they could electrify like ten homes or something like?
Yeah, they, they gave us some numbers uh, last time when we met, they said, you know, we could target twenty-five the first year and some, or twenty-five a year or whatever, I don't remember the numbers. There was, they gave us some numbers, we asked them for some numbers, last time we met with them, then we kind of black on the fans in terms of giving numbers, we can push back. Uh, but I don't think they want to guarantee anything, because I think a guarantee is, they probably can give us a target. I'm not sure they can guarantee anything, because obviously it's.
Cause it, it sounds like maybe that changed a little since we last met, maybe they were tipping issues with, with doing that, because I remember them being pretty like, yeah, we can. Maybe I'm just remembering.
Well, I can tell you for San Jose, it's two hundred, two hundred fifty, fifty family homes. For Mountain View, it's seventy-five multifamily homes. Yes, they are, they are incented, they have a lot of incentives to be able to do that, which we probably wouldn't have. Mountain View, not, not as much. But yeah, I mean, I think. Talking about targets, yeah, I think we can talk about targets, yeah. I think that's doable.
And I guess when I, when I think about the, the, all the stuff you went out, which is really good stuff, I mean, some of it is pretty easy and probably a no-brainer. Uh, and some of it's a lot harder and takes longer, so. I think like when we come back, we should start thinking about, or maybe you guys know how you prioritize, like, I think writing an article in the daily, in the town prior, I would. Maybe we should be doing that, right? There's articles on beer every three months, but we don't have anything on environmental items. Or not a lot of, right? And maybe we should support something like that, so, uh, but some of those are easy and some of them are harder, so just maybe we're thinking about how to prioritize them.
Question on, on writing articles or things like this, if we do anything, it has to be something that.
Yeah.
Council, the commission approves, right?
Well, as, as a resident, you can do that anytime, but I guess.
Yeah, if we say.
Yes, no, I think, I think we come up with a commission, maybe there's more to volunteer over the year to write an article and take. Take ownership and then obviously that'll probably be approved.
We have to get, so that's if it's a commission, then we have.
It's fairly organized, yeah.
But I think, you know. Also, one of the, the, the things we, we thought about in terms of the town prior and all that stuff. If we start doing some of that, the things we've been talking about, I think we should advertise it in the town prior as a minimum, right? Start just writing articles, it's like talking about block power, if we do it, block power or ensemble or talking about the setbacks or whatever things we can come up with, we can just say, hey. You know, be frank about it, just say, hey, we electrify your building, you get five percent roll of coverage. Put that in the town prior, let, that is, you know.
That's gonna self-advocate.
Yeah, that'll be, yeah, but it's okay, we want, we want to, I mean, we want to spread the word, the word.
Pay for ads, but we can't.
Yeah, but yeah.
Whatever is easily possible to do.
Because it sounds like the actions will come back in August. I mean, if we have any feedback.
Yeah, you said it. Yeah, but all the feedback goes back to Tanya, I guess.
I'll send the slides and you can just reply to that, that email.
And then we'll have a further, it'll be an agenda item in August, right?
Yeah, so then to provide like a recommendation of what you're recommending to staff to, to work, to, to refer on you.
Uh, let's say, I have some concerns about some of the incentives I'm talking about, increasing acreage and I, I just um, worry about the effect of uh, deepening inequality and like. If it is tied to low-income housing, then I think, great, um, but I just have, yeah, concerns about what the net effect is, I'm just thinking too. Even though they're on electric, I think in general, bigger properties end up leading to bigger waste in a lot of cases, so I just think that there's a lot of factors. To think about when we're doing this sort of type of incentives. So I'll certainly do more selection of that too, but I'm better keeping my.
No updates, no, no, no separate updates?
Uh, like, commissioners' reports and comments, demand, yeah, no separate updates.
Okay. Any commission reports? That from you? So.
We did, well, it was.
I know, but I have a red here. Do I call out people? Uh, what do we, we just got through May, am I right? I don't want to call out these people. It's me and Rashina.
Oh, good gosh.
May fourteenth and May twenty-eighth. And Bruno, you were on the April thirtieth, but you might have. So yeah, we uh, we will update you next. My holidays. I don't have a calendar, like, so you should, you should call out the, the next one or. Yeah. Maura and Champagne. And T. Logan's? Oh, good point, uh, and Don. And Carl. But I think we kind of did it randomly, yeah.
There was one yesterday, right?
Yes. There was one yesterday, the annual budget was adopted, um, development impact fees was an item that is continued um, for additional discussion and. Yeah, so that's what you guys were looking for, but um.
Yes, I think that was you, uh, yesterday.
I, I forgot.
I, I didn't, I did attend part of it and the other thing that, the district talk is very entertaining.
I, I would, oh, interesting, enough to word for it, um. So the city is being required to move into um, citywide digital.
Oh, yeah, all of that, yeah.
So, um. Yeah, it, it is um, stuff for um, the commission, the um, you don't talk about it as your annual commission capacity, but. Um, obviously you guys are residents and so um, you definitely should be involved if you want, or, you know, at least communicate with, you know, the. Family, people you know in the community, um, because it obviously is um. It's very stringent, I've done this actually, this is my third year, you see that as a district, so it's, it's ever pleasant doing it. Um, and it's very um, logarithmic the first time. I'll tell you, it's actually the second time when you get to re-district, it's actually more pleasant, because it's, it's not just so mathematical and just. You know, maths and figuring out enough population in one area and all the cherry-mandering on, so it's um, it's an interesting process.
What do you think of the redistricting actually? Is that council, is that the staff?
So the, the, the high-level overview that all the high-end fleets share is that. Um, so essentially the city receives a letter, it's with a threat of lawsuit, so we have to do it. Um, there's not really a way to win the lawsuit essentially. Um, from there, um, we have to then hire a demographer, a demographer is specific to um, kind of uh, using the last round of census data, so. Thankfully, um, we're not like in the mid kind of cycle between census, where that's it before and under jurisdictions that I've been in. Um, or we're kind of on the earlier part, bringing the data, you know, it really, really takes like an, almost two years. Um, to get the next census um, out, so uh, they take that and then kind of um, play with the numbers and the. The potential physical boundaries of the space um, for districting, but then obviously um, any uh. Communities of interest, so that doesn't just mean the demographics um, of the racial kind of profiles of the city, but also areas of interest, meaning um. Yeah, I guess you could say um, like, layover, which, you know, was a specific plan area. If that ever kind of had become like a really big thriving, specific dense neighborhood, you could kind of say that that was like an area or population of interest, but we don't really have anything that's super. Congregated like that, um, so it's a little bit interesting, so um, the mapping process that is fairly interesting, um, if uh, you guys wanna participate.
But I thought it was interesting how the consultant, I was like, was he a consultant? I, I would.
Yeah, Paul Mitchell, not the guy that does your hair, but um, Paul Mitchell, the guy that does maths.
Yeah. So, yeah, he used several things as an example of what those groups could be, and he used that if there was a. Geographic group that had similar environmental beliefs, then that could be one of the like, major groups, so. That's why, that's where it started to lead into what we're doing, potentially, yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, question. Uh, where do we start with the permit fees, the, the things that you showed us last time or the?
So the permit fees, those that had already been adopted, uh, so those go in, yeah, so those go into effect July first.
Okay, so technically the money we collect can be applied to sustainability activities?
So that, that's something that will obviously, um, the council's aware of that that's what the commission wants, so they will monitor it over the. Because obviously everything's performance-based, kind of like what we talked about at the last meeting, so they'll have to obviously review that as a part of their um. Mid-year um, budget, but then obviously next year is the annual budget, so it kind of gives them the, the data that this is what, remember what we talked about, it's like the. The pre versus post collection and kind of the expenditure that way, so that's kind of what we're gonna be able to propose for the, the next annual budget is to, for whatever we collected. Is that that's what the My World Commission had originally requested um, in order to be able to leverage for the future.
For the next budget. Uh, okay, um, any additional future agenda items?
Um, just the one uh. The Green Town interns. Everyone on board with that for August?
Um, so. And then electrification, yeah, electrification, and I don't know what else. Electrification would also be, I'm trying to.
Yes, it would be a more formal agenda than a, a committee report, so.
So I'd like to propose, since we talked about potentially writing articles in newspapers and things. That we try and talk about it. So that we can then do it. Um, I don't know what, that the agenda item.
That would be.
Outreach, environmental commission, public outreach in media.
Outside of electrification or within?
Outside of, like, general, right?
Yeah, so maybe the top is very, actually, I think that might be worth it, um. Is general outreach that we do, and it's kind of tied into the uh, other discussion we're having on E P fair or.
E P fair, all that other stuff, so maybe we talk about what our plan should be.
Maybe in such a low, I improve, we can have a separate discussion.
That's also not part of like our work plan that we have for the year, so what would that fall under?
I think outreach is.
Outreach is kind of something that's always part of the.
The outreach was a bold point on the presentation to the uh, city council. So it was in our plan.
But I think the question is, if, in August, we talk about E P fair again, or whatever.
I guess, Tanya, what my view that, we, we can talk about how much time that takes of, of yours, but my view is that would probably be someone on the commission. Writing about one of their favorite subjects, whatever that, whether it's trees or electrification or, you know.
Well, it has to be something that has to do with what the city provides or.
Would have to be something that's on our, yeah, on our work plan.
But if we just. Let's be able to talk about what the plan might be.
Right, yeah.
How, how the process would work, so that.
And whether it meets your time constraints.
I mean, the obvious ones, right? Uh, we have the, the light ordinance, we have the single-use plastics, I mean, we should talk about that in the town prior when it comes out. Or just before it passed coming out.
Yeah, so that, that might make sense, Tanya, I think it might be a good idea to form one, I, I think so.
I think it's more so tying, like uh, like we'll pay for like a um. Like an advertisement, like that's more of like an article of some sort that actually talks about like what we're doing in regards to each of the main kind of um, work plan items.
Have to pay for it, you can submit it as an other voices, like comment section.
Do you want us to come back in August?
I think. Uh, we have to vote on it, right? But I, I would think so. I would put it on the, I would vote to put it on the feature, the features of the item and then you guys can figure out. Yeah. Yeah.
So Green Town interns, building electrification, um, and general outreach.
Okay, with that, any meetings adjourned?